All right, good morning, everyone. We are going to start the meeting again this morning. It's 8:05 a.m. on Saturday. What is the date today? June 26th.
Day before Sunday.
And this is a continuation of our digital planning session. Hey, Lauren, we don't have any new citizen houses, do we?
We already have ours.
Thank you. So Brian, I think it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So today, day two. And remember, we're here extra early tomorrow morning for day three. And we're going to take reading the CVs over here. So today, this morning, we're going to continue on with our department reviews and discussions. And given what happened yesterday, probably we'll be up a little faster. We have some things that we can slide around. And if we get down a little early, that's fine. So at this point, we're going to start and jump straight into that. You should have been getting some answers from some of the questions that came in yesterday. So watch your emails. Sure, we'll be doing that again in the next week for any questions that may have come up today. So today, we're going to go ahead and start with our library director, Laura Turner. She is going to be our first victim. And then we'll have everybody else line up. So Laura, will you have one?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Laura Turner, Director of the Library. I'm here with Phil Barrett, who's the Library Services Manager. So first, I'd like to start out with a reminder of the importance of the public library. So in a municipality, you have entities like fire, police, and public works. And those entities act as the meat and the vegetables. They're vital to a city's existence. Whereas the public library acts as a seasoning. While it's not necessary for existence, it does make a nourishing meal more enjoyable. And the spice that the library provides makes Relit more appealing and builds a greater sense of community. And besides, who likes bland food? So I'm going to start out with some highlights. Way back in October of 2019, we did a facilities assessment in anticipation of the new library that we're going to have several years down the road. Along with surveys, we had two public focus groups. We met with our architect, Maureen Arndt, 720 Design, to determine what it is that the public is looking for, what are their expectations? What is it that they don't like at the library? We got a lot of really good feedback. And then in January of 2020, our director, Kevin R. High retired. I was named the indirect director. Then life changed dramatically March 16th of 2020 because the library closed due to COVID. And even though we didn't really know what was going on, what was going to happen, the staff adapted. We began issuing temporary digital access library cards. People could get library cards for our digital materials without ever stepping foot in the library. We adapted our story times to be virtual on Facebook. And then we also had on social media challenges for young and old and virtual activities. Our GED and ESL process continued via telephone and Zoom. And then on April 27th, we began to offer curbside checkouts to our patrons. May 26th, we opened to the public with limited hours, and we continued the curbside checkout service. We were the first non-emergency city to have a city facility opening after COVID. And that was because the citizens needed their spice. They needed us. That year, we conducted our summer reading program virtually. And then into fiscal year 2021, in October, we were able to begin operating under our normal hours with two public computers. We had, we were limiting the time that patrons were in the library to 30 minutes. We had no seating. I was named the director officially. Then November through March, because we couldn't do in-person programs, we had crafts and STEM activities to go. And we also offered a bookmark contest for the kids for enter pay day and birthday. In April of 2021, we were able to discontinue the time limits on patron visits. We were able to start offering seating in our cafe area. And we added two more computers, or a total of four computers with plexiglass barriers between them. In May of 2021, we reinstated our senior book club. Our first meeting, we had eight participants who were very, very anxious to start meeting with people again in person and doing things in person. And we're planning on having the author visit us in July. So if you're interested, Revis Warden will be at our book club July 7th at 1:00 p.m. here at the RCC. And then we were also able to reinstate our cell gen machines and our public access catalogs, provide additional seating, open our study room, and have a total of eight computers available. Our summer reading program is going well. We're focusing on rewards and engagement. We're flexing the program sizes according to the participants. Since babies are harder to control than the younger children, we're trying to limit that more than we would maybe a senior or an older person program. Our kickoff on June 12th hosted 250 kids. The program runs from June 12th to July 31st. And our first week, we had 169 participants. Recent enhancements, we have continued with curbside checkouts. We got a lot of really good positive feedback about it. Busy parents with little ones who don't want to get their kids out of the car or in the back end of the car. Seniors with mobility issues, it's really, really convenient to just bring their materials out to them. During the height of COVID, when we were closed and when a lot of libraries were closed, our integrated library services software, they implemented auto renewal of materials, which has been really convenient for patrons. If an item is on reserve for another person, it won't automatically renew that. But if it is part, if they're able to renew that, because when you check out an item, you can renew it two times, the system will automatically do that for patrons. We also implemented Gabi, which allows us to communicate by text with our patrons through our integrated library system. We upgraded our Tumble Book service to Tumble Book Premium. And Tumble Book is eBooks for children, offering games, educational games, interactive eBooks that either read to them or assist them with reading. And so we upgraded that to a version that also offers math and graphic novels. We now have plexiglass barriers in between our computer stations. And we were able to obtain that through a CARES Act grant. We worked a lot with our grant coordinator, Ronald. And we had applied for the CARES Act grant through the Texas State Library, which gave us those partitions between our computers. It also enabled us to get 15 Wi-Fi hotspots that we can now check out to patrons. So we're in the process now of working out the, finalizing the policies for that. So we'll be talking to David Burnin and our library advisory board to finalize how the checkouts on that are going to go. Is it going to be one per family? How long of a checkout will that take? So we're looking forward to being able to help bridge that digital divide by letting people check out Wi-Fi hotspots. We also applied for a new directions grant with Relit PD. And that's allowing us to get a database called A to Z database that will provide marketing information for small businesses, job search information, people search information for trying to get people connected with their support network better. Unfortunately, we did not receive a grant from the Texas State Library or the National Endowment for the Humanities. But we are still waiting on word from a grant from Dollar General for more Wi-Fi hotspots that come with tablets. When we have spoken with peer libraries, they have recommended to try to get different types of hotspots to see which one's best in your community. And that's the reason why we're pursuing that through grant applications. Because it is a bit of an experimental program. We felt more comfortable experimenting with kind of grant dollars than the tax dollars that the citizens. So the pandemic forced us to reconsider a lot about our programs and how we define success for a program. Is success how many kids we can cram into the activity room? Or is success the level of quality and the level of inspiration, so to speak, that participants get in a program? So we decided that we wanted to focus more on quality and that we want our programs to be more inspiring. We need more seasoning in our programs. So we're asking for an additional 7,000 to provide the level of programs that will have quality, inspiration, especially for our after-school programs. We're currently spending $16 per participant per program. And this would increase it to 17 per program or per person per program. Our plan right now for after-school for the fall, because we have to have a few different strategies tried out for the coil students and the influx of students. So what we were wanting to do was try to contain them in the activity room, so to speak. Give them a small lesson. When we polled them, they basically said, we're tired at the end of the day. We've been at school all day. We're tired, we're kind of hungry. We mostly want to charge our phones and socialize. So we thought if we could entice them into the activity room, provide a place for them to relax, charge their phones, maybe give them about 15 minutes of a life lesson. Here's how you tie a necktie. Here's how you address a letter. Jaw, here's how you fill that out. Catch them with that. And we're trying to work with getting a grant or some community donations or something to also have snacks for them. Because we think we'll have more leverage with the teens with food. Because everybody knows teens like food. Teens like food. So while that's going on, then each day, we would have one day a children's program, one day a tween program, and one day a teen program that would be more focused on STEM robotics. Something where it would be participants that really, really want to sit down and learn something. And so that would be happening in the conference room in a quieter atmosphere while the teens are in the activity room. So that's kind of our plan for the after-school programs. So the 7,000, it's our only request. Hope you consider this request for funding to set up our library programs. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Laura, I have a question. The author visit in July? Try to find it on your website while you were talking, but I didn't want to spend a lot of time. What day and what time will do the author?
It is, and thank you for pointing that out. Because as you're saying that, I don't believe we have.
I don't think it's on your website.
We don't have that. Thank you. It will be on July 7th. And it's at 1:00 p.m. It's here at the RCC. His name is Revis Warden, and his book is called The Rock Hole. It's a mystery.
Called what?
The Rock Hole. He is a former Relit teacher, uh, girl on ISD teacher.
Thanks.
Testing. Any questions, Council?
You may have turned that on.
So thank you for that presentation. I'd like to hear your thoughts on the GED program and whether it's, you know, it's important continuing that program. What are your thoughts on that?
So that is one thing. Whenever we, whenever we did the PBB, we went into that with a lot of trepidation because it does highlight the expense of the GED program. We have, we've looked into other options that people have in what we do. We could defer people to a local community college. There is a great expense for the community college, but also they're in a class. What they get with us, we have a GED coordinator, and we have volunteer tutors that work one-on-one with the students. And so they get individual instruction, but they also get motivation. One thing that in speaking with our coordinator that we've seen is, especially when people are trying to raise a family or deal with life and get their GED, it's easy to forget about the GED. It's easy to let that fall off. And our coordinator works really well with their support network. And she will call your mom, she will call your husband, she will call your children and say, hey, so-and-so is not going to class. We need to get them back to class. What can we do to connect with this student? And so while it is a more significant cost, we don't see any other program that has the potential that it showed to give somebody the ability to earn up to $10,000 a year more, which in GED studies have shown that that earning potential significantly increases once you have that. And so we feel that that's important to contribute to our economy, to have those people not missing out on that. And so that's why we feel like it's important to continue with that. Because we have had that conversation about the concerns of it is an expensive program, but we feel like it's worth it because it has such a significant impact on that person's life.
Can you explain, do we charge for that class or is it?
No, it's a free class.
Okay. And how many do we usually get in over the prime participants?
Last year, we had, sorry, let me get to the GED program. Last year, we had 20 people graduating that. Now, that was also getting tutored via Zoom and phone, which I think is kind of significant. We are trying to work on getting more through the program, getting more information about the program happening. Did I speak that right? Phil, am I?
Is 20 low or is 20 high?
20, I don't think 20 is high. We have had, when I, when I started working here eight years ago, there were times when we had one to zero.
Just speaking of that, Constance and Herb, you were here for a great job. I'm increasing the number of participants. Sorry, I had faith in my ability to speak loud, I guess. So Constance has done a really good job of both increasing the number of people in the program, but also the graduates, speaking of what Laura was saying on engagement and support network and all that. Do a really good job there. And even through doing things through Zoom and on the phone, we still kept the participation rate. But now the grant is able to bring things back up, bring them back in. All of our gamers are open, the comments are open again. We're confident that we can increase that number, which then the cost per person goes down because we want them to go in through. So that part is a bit less than zero.
Thank God for explaining that. Has there been any consideration to have a low-cost charge? I mean, I don't know if that's, it's something that's been discussed, but that's even a good idea.
It's something we could take into consideration and look at for the future to offset that cost.
Do we limit it to Relit residents?
No, we do not.
So do you have an analysis of what, how much is Relit residents versus surrounding communities?
I can provide that for you, but I don't have that at this time.
Well, she can hold it for me. Yeah, I mean, I think it's an important program. I know it's an expensive program per individual. But I'm not, I'm not so sure we should be using Relit taxpayer dollars to have a program for non-Relit residents. That's a little, you know, I hate to say that, but I think we need to grow the program for our residents and not support surrounding resident, surrounding communities with our taxpayer dollars. How you all feel about that?
Is that a fixed cost? In other words, no matter how many students you have, is this, we'll run at 57,000, is that a fixed cost?
That cost, I believe it would decrease if we had more students because we would have, the cost of the coordinator would not increase, the cost of the, because the tutors are free, you know? And so it's, it's, that cost would decrease because it's taking into account kind of the facility and things like that.
So your cost per student would change. But I guess what I'm asking is, is the cost of the program the same no matter how many students you have?
Yes, that's correct. So just to repeat that with a microphone, the question and answer was, the cost of the program remains the same regardless of how many students you have. Yes. But I, but I do think it's important that we're using our taxpayer dollars for our expenses.
Absolutely.
Even, even with the answer to that question. I don't think you were applying something else.
No, I wasn't.
Martha answered, no, she wasn't.
Laura, I've heard there's supplies per student. Do you have to purchase certain supplies? So if I'm a student and I go to a GED program, do you purchase supplies specific to me?
I know, we do not.
So yes, the cost does remain the same because it doesn't cost per student. That overhead is set overhead if they have one student or if they have 25 students.
Yeah, and it's important to know that that overhead is there regardless because the instructors are volunteers, right? I mean, if we eliminated the program, we don't eliminate $57,000 in costs because a lot of this is facility.
If we eliminated the program, we would lay off our GED coordinator. So there would be that cost significance. But as far as the facility cost, it would still be there.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Did you get that on my answer?
Thank you.
It has been quite a journey for you all this last year. And we've said it before, it bears importance to say again. You guys have done a wonderful job. You continue to do a wonderful job for this community. And we thank you so much. And our community thanks you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Is everybody ready?
Yeah, you nervous?
Yes.
Ms. Blake's fault.
Okay, good morning. Thanks for having us to be here. Mayor Clever, I'm the director for the Parks and Recreation Department. My assistant director, Karen Vacheco, is here as well. She's here for moral support and to help me answer any questions that you have with. So again, thank you guys for having us to present to you this morning. It's good to be back. It's good to see everybody. So that being said, we'll get right into it. So a few years ago, the department established a department focus, or basically why we are a portion. So we have continued to focus on those five things. So the first one is tourism with the special events and the Ataboy Park and Congriff Park. We're drawing in people from surrounding cities to participate in things that we offer. So that is one aspect. The second aspect is juvenile crime prevention. So through partnerships with the police department, offering our summer programs, our spring break programs, athletics, things that will allow youth and teens to participate in programs just helps us keep them busy, keep them off the streets, keep them engaged in things that they really would be able to participate in on a daily basis. Third is air equality. Happy to say that for the 18th year in a row, we are, have been recognized as a Trees City USA program. So that is outstanding. We hopefully will be going on year 19, so to continue that trend. So Texas summers, trees are important. Trees help contribute to air equality. So we continue to focus on planting, replanting, making sure we're staying in line with it as well. Health benefits services, parks, we encourage parks users to get out, to utilize our amenities, walk the trails, use anything that they can. Playgrounds just to increase health. And then lastly is benefits of property value. So they said the position you live to a park or proximity increases your value in 20% by tax revenue. So those, those are all aspects that we continue today to focus on, move forward with, and just continue to put in front. So last year was a challenging year. 2021 successes, as most of you guys know, we had to modify a lot of our special events. So we were basically planning three events at once. We had a Plan A, we had a Plan B, and we had a Plan C. Started with our drive-in movies. We went from having movies in the park or it was on the lawn to doing drive-in movies, which was a huge success. Basically was we allowed everybody to come in, sit in their cars, old school style, obviously with limitations. But we averaged probably 25, 30 cars a night. So that was a plus. Our trunk or treat was another one we had to modify. We went from everyone circling cars from downtown to people staying in their cars circling the booths. So that was different, and that was a lot of fun, too. So we, we had a lot of participants that came. So we, we had a lot of participants that came through. Uh, instead of canceling our important ceremonies, our Memorial Day, our Veteran Day ceremonies, we did virtual. So while we continued to offer them, we taped them, we videoed them, we still provided those recognition for those that have served, so for those that sacrificed their lives. So that was important for us to continue to, uh, we just had to modify some, uh, different things. And then lastly was our scavenger hunt that we offered, uh, in last fall. So, uh, staff retreats, um, continues to be an important goal of ours. Um, it's important for us to really hear what our staff says. So each fall, we offer retreats for our individual divisions. So we have a parks retreat, we have a recreation retreat, and then after that, we do a leadership retreat, which includes all of our supervisors. And during that retreat, we just talked about, basically summarize what all of the team talked about. So we talk about wants, needs, trainings, uh, projects, you know, what they need help with. So we're allowing them to really engage with us and talk to us and provide us, you know, with what's going to make their lives a little easier, what makes it, going to make it more efficient, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes as well. Uh, one of the big things we've also started to roll out is servant leadership. So as a, as a, as a team, executive, and senior leadership, we started doing servant leadership trainings. So we actually started to roll that down to our supervisors as well as some of our crew leaders, just to talk about servant leadership. And they meet monthly, um, just to go over different chapters. They assign different, um, projects and chapters to each group, and they come and they talk about it. So everyone is engaged, everyone kind of understands what servant leadership is about and how they continue, or how we continue to move forward. Um, continuing our youth athletic leagues was successful. Kids want to play. Kids just want to play. So inspired that, we, we let them play, we put some things into, into a modification mode. We assigned kind of seating reservations, if you will, with your boxes on the ground at the baseball field. So, um, we had to keep those parents. For some, it was good. Um, for some, as, as you probably can imagine, we're disagreeing. But to keep everyone safe and for us to be able to continue to offer that was awesome. So kids loved it. We, we did the, the fall baseball league. We also took our indoor youth volleyball league and moved it to community park and did the same volleyball league instead of canceling it. So that was a great opportunity for those that really wanted to play, uh, volleyball. We, through COVID, we continued our seven days a week service. Uh, while it was a strain on our park staff, we were still able to offer the seven day a week. So that was nice to help stay on top of that and keep us moving forward to get us prepared for the week. So that was another plus. And then lastly, our implementation of our employee recognition and appreciation program. Um, that actually was one of the things that we had, uh, really were eager to implement. So show and tell, I have to show everybody. So this is our gold chain award, this is our recreation division award. Uh, we're still waiting on the medallion to come in, so that's why we're doing that. So each month, the rec division nominates three or four people for the rec division award, whether it's they did something nice, they went above and beyond, um, did something extraordinary. Their, their teammates can nominate them for that award. And then the other award is, this is our digging for success award, so it's basically just a gold shovel. It's a shovel I found in my own.
Oh, okay.
So basically what we did is, um, to make things fun, to be creative, I know the guys thought it was a little corny at first, um, but I think they bought into it and they loved it. Um, our first winner, Alan Ryan Myers, been here a little over twenty years, maybe twenty-five years. Trying to get caught in the little off guard, but they're kind of the same process. Their peers nominate them, so it's more of a peer-to-peer recognition rather than us saying, hey, you did a good job. So they're recognizing each other, which is a great program. So we have gone on our third shovel award. Uh, this last month, we gave it to everybody just because of the unfortunate circumstance that we went through as a department. So, uh, most of the guys, all of the guys stepped up to, uh, help them with that, so lots of fun. So some of our current challenges that we have, obviously the staffing. They really struggled at the beginning of the year for White Zone to find lifeguards. I think he, uh, he's just about where he needs to be, uh, just to help alleviate some of the current guards that they have, just to, uh, help relieve them. And then as well as our, our parks division, too, is, as well. So trying to find them MS ones to come in at the basic level has been the challenge. Uh, another challenge is our new parks coming online, Hurford Park, uh, like front of Congrove, and the most recently started Lake Collins Trail project. Uh, just trying to keep those things maintained, um, with the people, with the supplies, with the equipment. It's going to be a challenge. Uh, department marketing, as you guys know, currently, um, we're in the process of hiring a special events admin coordinator. That person basically takes on all of the department, marketing, social media, making flyers, uh, keeping up with the website, but also planning the twenty-five special events that we offer each year. So it's definitely a challenge for, for that person. And then lastly, the addition of amenities, uh, without meeting the staff and funding, uh, new courts, new fields, new parks, and then the biggest one was COVID-nineteen, so. So getting right into our requests, we have four different requests. Our first request is sixty thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-nine to seal the pour in place and make additional repairs at Kids Kingdom. As most of you guys know, that is the highest, highest utilized facility in the city that, that the Parks and Recreation Department has. Kids are there from sunup to sundown. Um, the picture on the left, I know it's kind of difficult to see, but this is the zip line. So you can see the areas that are now starting to wear out along with some of the additional areas, uh, throughout the playground. So what we will do is we will actually make repairs to all of this. This will be removed so that we can, uh, look at replacing all of this as well as some of the other spots. And then with Pour in Place, it needs a seal. So basically what you're doing is, if you've ever put a puzzle together and you put hodgepodge over top, if you know what hodgepodge is, that's basically what it's doing. So it's like a glue that helps seal, uh, the Pour in Place material, which keeps the life for about four or five years. Now, you have to do that every four or five years just to maintain the quality of the Pour in Place.
Hey, Eric.
Yeah, yes.
I'm trying to get the microphone. Oh, microphone challenge today. I will yell. Um, so, so you're going to replace it with the same surface that's currently there?
So what we're doing, so the area beneath the zip line.
So the area beneath the zip line, we're currently looking at some, some cost differentials because what we thought about doing was seeing what it would take to replace the Pour in Place and the current mulch with turf, which is what we currently have at Springfield Park.
So let me, let me ask my whole question. So why are we talking about, uh, Pour in Place and sealing? Was that the other places? I'm confused. And are we currently sealing it and we missed something?
So when we originally put it in, we did not seal it. Um, so we would have to replace the Pour in Place there for sure, which is the, the surface. And there are some other spots that really need to be repaired as well. So those will be included in those repairs. So then once they made those repairs, we would have to go in and reseal where they repaired the Pour in Place, um, as well as the existing partners that we have.
Why didn't we seal it?
I do not know the answer to why we didn't, but I can tell you that Pour in Place does have to be resealed about every five years. Um, and this is not uncommon for five years of use, especially for a playground that is used as heavily as Kids Kingdom. Um, you wouldn't see holes quite as big as you'd see, but you do have to about every five years invest about sixty thousand dollars on Pour in Place to have it repaired and have it resealed.
Is, is it worth, uh, this is crazy, but is it worth eventually replacing the entire surface with something that is not going to cost sixty thousand dollars every five years?
Everything has maintenance costs associated. Um, you think about that's about a two hundred thousand dollar surface?
Mm-hmm.
So if you do the maintenance you need on an ongoing basis, it will last twenty years. But it costs fifty to sixty thousand dollars every five years. And maybe at this playground every three and a half to four years based on use alone, um, to keep it up and running.
So, so the turf, is turf more, a more reliable surface than the, uh, whatever this is?
Like the grass?
So, so turf, turf is a little, yes. Um, takes less maintenance. Now, there are some things that you still have to do with it, so like you have to, to brush it. So it's just like parking in your house when you walk on it, it flattens out. So you would have to go back in and you brush it every six months to a year and then add the filler, whether it's sand or the rubber pellets or whatever. So, and it could be more cost-effective to do turf. We would just have to do the research for that.
Yeah, I, I just.
A lot of our issues at Kids Kingdom is just sheer number of people. There aren't many playgrounds anywhere in the Midwest that get the number of people that Kids Kingdom gets every single year.
Yeah, I understand that. I just think, uh, obviously we missed the mark on not having it sealed, um, which is why it's probably this really rough condition on top of all the usage to get, so.
Yeah, so I would just like to make a comment because I know, uh, I'm, I'm looking at this picture of, um, some of the missing pieces, actually, of the surface. And that's a huge trip hazard, uh, to me. And so, uh, you know, it just kind of emphasizes the fact that we have got to build the maintenance, uh, in all of these improvements that we do than in any other parks, whether it's playground equipment or shade structures or whatever. It's one thing to initially purchase those items, but we have got to be more proactive, uh, instead of reactive, uh, when these things tear apart and then you've got to come to us and ask for, um, money to, to do the maintenance on these surfaces. I just, I, I think we really need to dig a little deeper, uh, as we purchase these items so that you guys will have what you need to maintain them. And, uh, then, you know, to, um, um, to everyone else's point, just wondering if this is the best surface, um, that is available, uh, for that kind of hard traffic.
When we put it in, it was the best surface for that kind of hard traffic.
And things change, they do.
Six years ago, you know, things are different today than they were in twenty fifteen when we started planning this and developing it. And turf might be the future now. I don't know if they have used turf in this high traffic of an area and what the long-term effect of turf will be on a hundred and fifty kids a day using that area that you see right there. So I mean, even mulch, which, mulch will hold up to just about anything. They beat the crud of mulch when there was mulch there, which is why we put in Pour in Place.
Like the mulch was awful and it's so awful, they, you know, solid surface.
We made this so much, we were having to rake mulch every single day. And so when you get in that much traffic in a small area, it's just, I don't know if there is a perfect surface for our Kids Kingdom playground just based on the amount of use it gets.
Yeah, it's a real challenge, you know.
There are other kids there at eight-thirty every morning.
Yeah. Well, you know, obviously we need to, need to do this and, and make it safe and get it repaired and protect the investment that we have made already. But, um, I would like to explore, you know, what's, what's the latest and the greatest, uh, because technology does change. And as much as that playground is used, I think it's worth exploring, uh, and bringing something to council maybe for the two thousand twenty-three budget. But, um, but I'm, I'm all in favor of getting this sealed and repaired so, um, so that it's safe and in good condition.
I didn't mean to hurt you, Martha. I thought I was being helpful coming to get the microphone. Um, so I agree with, with what Martha just said. I, I think it's important to get this repaired and get this sealed because there's, there's quite a bit of life left in the surface. There is a huge hole, which you can see, um, and then this wear and tear, but that's pretty repairable and then minimal cost of sealing. And then let's, let's think about, you know, how much longer that's going to last. And maybe in two or three or four years, there's a whole nother surface. But I would hate to give up on this surface when it has just some repair work that needs to be done and quite a bit of useful life still left. That's just my personal opinion.
Eric, I've got just an easier question for you. The, uh, the surface, wherever the surface is, doesn't it have to be, uh, relatively soft?
Yeah, depending on, is it fall height?
Fall zone.
Fall zones, yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. It, it can't be just anything. It's got to be, got to be a surface that they can pull on without breaking it.
Yes.
I know when I ride the zip line, I don't move all the way.
So I'm assuming that none of the other areas of the park are sealed either. So what, uh, what does, can y'all look at the cost of what it would take to seal the entire playground so that it can extend the life?
It is the entire, yeah, it's the entire playground.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
That's repairs and seal the entire playground.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
And do that quickly, that is a hazard.
Yes, Mary. Uh, request number two, uh, is for a contract and compliance coordinator. Uh, basically what this position is right now currently is one of our PMS two positions. Is basically monitoring, uh, and evaluating our mowing contracts. So in conjunction with Carrie and, and Matt and I, that position would help us evaluate, uh, mowing locations, um, you know, continue to measure if needed because, you know, things are popping up, areas are popping up that we, we haven't moved previously or we've mowed and then we stopped mowing. Uh, but this is a very detailed position. And what it's currently doing is taking our PMS two away from some other park operations that he could be doing. So what he's doing is he's visiting with citizens about mowing complaints. He's going in verifying that these contractors are indeed mowing the areas that they say they're mowing. Um, so it's, it's taking a lot of, a lot of his time to really focus on that area. And as you guys know, from March through basically September, October, it's mowing season. And he helps with the medians, he helps with, um, uh, everything as far as the aspects of mowing go. And the off-season is when we really evaluate and relook at the mowing contracts and make any adjustments that we need to make. Uh, and then also he works with off-season spraying. So this position really, really focuses on those elements of, uh, mowing and spraying just for the beautification, if you will. So he holds them accountable for everything that they're doing, uh, so it would just be, um, an added bonus for us. Request number three is a workman, uh, multifunctional cart. We currently have one of these. These, these carts are very, very important and essential. And I say that because they can reach areas that some of our little Colorado trucks or our new trucks will not be able to reach. They have a dump bed on them, so especially with Lake Collins Trail coming online, it would be easier for staff to get right up and down the trails in one of these to pick up trash, cut limbs, transfer, you know, fill holes, they can put dirt in the bed, they dump it. So it's, it's very important. They can use it for irrigation repairs, uh, trail clearings, like if we have to go to the nature trail and clear, clear limbs from the trail. It's just easy for them to get up and down the trail for that as well. And then lastly, it is our caterpillar rubber track loader. We have one of these as well, but we use this all of the time. We like these track loaders compared to the wheel loaders because it's less damaging on the turf. It will allow us to get to more, what, if you will, land we have to use it for dumping dirt, conditioner onto the infield. It's, it's less damaging. So it acts more like a tank, if you will, and it doesn't create many ruts. So this will help us save money in the long run because what we currently have to do is if they're using it at community park and we need to take it to the trail to fill in some of the holes that are on the trail, we have to wait until that, that project is done at community. So this would be ideal for us when we use it two, three times a week, basically on a, on a yearly basis. And also they have accessories that you could buy, stump grinders, trenching, things like that. That will allow us to be more efficient in some of the stuff that we have to do. So this is our priority order, if you will. Our corn place, number one. Our compliance coordinator, number two. The multifunctional dump bed cart, number three. And then the rubber truck loader, number four. And that is all for now. Questions?
I have questions. I have the microphones, I'll start. I've talked to Angie about this several times. I don't know if I've said it in a council meeting. I just really would like us to look at our Memorial Day event and see if we can put Touch a Truck somewhere else that's more appropriate. It's a Memorial Day event. It's not a kids' fair. I hate to lose Touch a Truck. So if there's somewhere else we could put it, I think that's my personal opinion. I know that Brian Wilburn brought in, you know, vintage military equipment that one year. And that is, that's something that I know he had a vision to do that repetitively and then COVID hit, so I haven't talked to him about it in over a year. But something like that that could bring people in is, is more appropriate, in my opinion, than kids, you know, running all over equipment on a Memorial Day event. So I don't know how you all feel about that.
So going a little further to that, instead of Touch a Truck, we can do a public, a public safety day, something like that. I know we used to have that years and years ago.
Sure.
And it was like a public safety expo. And you had, you know, pretty much the same exact equipment that you have out there, even with the little works, vehicles and parks vehicles. So maybe you just make it its own events. And I think if you brought it as a public safety day, I think they'd even more interested in that.
Yeah, I would just be careful about that because then you have tents and you have music and you have, I just, you know, we got a Memorial Day event where we're memorializing. And that theme needs to carry through, again, personal, but that's details. Public safety event is a good event, too.
Yeah, separate.
Separate, separate.
Anyway.
Wasn't he talking about his event be separate?
Yeah. Separate day, separate, oh, okay. I thought you missed, instead of Touch a Truck.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I, I, I think we're lacking pretty significantly in this community of not having some kind of an MLK event. I've asked DeeDee and I to look at that, but that couldn't be. That's hard for, it's hard for a commission to start up a new event. And I know you all partner with Diversity Day with DeeDee and I. I would like us to look at, it doesn't have to be a big thing. We can start off small. We can ask the schools to have, you know, kids write essays and, you know, our Arts and Humanities Commission picks, you know, first, second, and third place. And, you know, DeeDee and I is part of, you know, that organization. I just feel like we're, we need to do something for MLK event. So any other comments there?
And since now Juneteenth is an official holiday, I've had several people voting about that.
We did light up the water tower with Juneteenth colors, so I was good.
Yeah. They brought that to mind.
Yeah. But I think some kind of, you know, even at the, at the tower, you know, to memorialize Juneteenth. I know we can't do everything, but that's an important one.
Maybe that's a day you could do Touch a Truck. Touch a Truck event.
I think we need a Touch a Truck day.
You know, a larger event with booths and all this other stuff. Trucks could be there.
We definitely don't want to do Touch a Truck on MLK day, I don't think.
Yeah. Well, you know, you've got to consider when the holiday is, too. MLK is middle of January, so chances are it's going to be cold. You know, whatever you do, so it's hard to do an outside event when it may be snowing, you know?
But, but MLK could be, you know, an essay contest. Doesn't have to be an outside event.
Right, I'm just saying, you've got to consider the time of year it is.
We're not taking things away if you haven't noticed.
No, we're not.
We're not adding any stuff.
We figured twenty five events was not enough.
Okay. So in your department focuses, you have one for tourism. Are you tracking the number of non-residents that use our parks?
So that particularly use our park system, we are not, but.
So how are you measuring tourism as a department focus where you're attracting non-residents to our systems?
Through our special events and through all our programs. So basically, what, what we do is we do evaluation forms. So we go, and that's one of the questions is ZipCo, and are you a resident?
So what, do you, do you publish those stats or are there stats?
We will be publishing those stats. Now that we are back to a hundred percent, if you will, we can, we can now get back to tracking all of that information. And then I, we will be conducting a monthly report that will have that information in it.
Awesome, thank you.
Well.
Thanks, guys. On your additional needs, if, just a thought, if we're going to be having a conversation about potential re-putting the parks back on a future bond, we might want to look at some of these additional deferred maintenance needs that are making capital expenses and money to be put on there as well. Just a thought.
That's a good point, man. So thinking about the Touch Truck, I wonder if, would that be logistically too tough to incorporate within July for the event? Okay.
We have all staff on that working that day. We have to have all staff when they can bake the equipment.
Okay, yeah. I figured it would be, it would be a good fit if, if it were possible.
But you sure could promote a downtown market day with Touch a Truck.
Yes, you could, yeah.
There are a lot of places to issue.
Yeah. That would be awesome. So just a comment about Juneteenth. I know I've been in touch with, with Dorothy Brooks in Garmont, who is, does a lot of activism there. And I know that the churches and possibly the senior college will be in touch with us about doing a Juneteenth celebration that's in partnership in the region. So I'm kind of excited about that. And some of the churches also and nonprofits just participating in that partnership. And then I wanted to talk about the median on sixty-six. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I know that we allocated some funds that had not been previously allocated for the maintenance of that and wondered how that was working out. I know that we're going to kind of do half of the maintenance through the contract and then half of it with parks. I know you guys are spread very thin. And how's that working out or are your parks guys being able to get to it? Do we need to allocate more through a contract? And then also, I wondered where we were at. We allocated some one-time funding for replacement of dead plants. And, and that was even before we had snow again and the killing of stuff. So just wondered where we were at on that plant replacement and also how that contract is working out.
So first, the contract. They got behind, the contractors got behind. So we were trying to do what we could with the medians, with the staff that we had. Ryan, who was the one who basically is, you know, overseeing a lot of that stuff, has really stayed on the contractor, pushed the contractor, held their feet to the fire, basically, to make sure that they continue to do what they do. And I don't, they've been out the last few weeks covering the medians, the contractors have, covering the medians, picking up trash. They were trimming. So they're getting back to where they were. I think a lot of it was some personnel issues that they have, that the contractors were having, no excuses by any means. But I think that's what we were running into with them. But they have assured us, they have gotten back to where they need to be and they will, they will get back to what they agreed to do with the medians. Secondly, as far as the plant replacement goes, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were waiting for the coves nap to come. Now, we're almost to July, but we've been checking irrigation, trying to figure out what is going to be the best material to put in there because we don't want to put, you know, the bushes that were, that were in there that they had to clear. So I know Ryan also was working on that along with Matt, our person and facilities superintendent, to get that stuff implanted and replaced as well.
Right, I just want to make sure that you guys have what you need for that to look really great because it's kind of like our foyer in a way when you back into the house. I mean, it's a, it's a major thoroughfare for our city. We want it to look good and give you guys what you need to keep it looking good. I know that we have, I think it was around fifty thousand dollars in cost savings on mowing. And I would assume that some of that is due to the drought tolerant planting and such that it won sixty-six and don't have to be mowed now. And maybe we can allocate some of that funding to maintaining it.
I think that savings, true as you say, Martha, is not in actual mowing and is not tied directly to higher sixty-six.
Okay.
So when we did the regular project, we increased maintenance in that area. So they went from just mowing, like once per, to having a higher maintenance plant bed. So anytime they're to the bed, that immediately increases the maintenance that has to be allocated to it. So the cost savings you're seeing is due just to the seasonality of mowing. So we have a lot of acres, I don't know right off the top of my head, that we mow in streets, gates, and drainage, and parks, and city facilities. And so the seasonality of that mowing is what saves us the money. You know, this year, we started a little later and we may end a little later or a little earlier than we contract. And so that's where we end up with the cost savings of mowing. Anytime we take out grass and put in a plant bed, we just double the maintenance of whatever area that is. Because it's so much more tedious to maintain that bed, even if it's drought tolerant and it still gets weeds. Those Texas weeds are not drought tolerant by any means. So that's just, it's just the nature of the bees, unfortunately. It looks better, but it is the nature of the bees.
Yeah. It's mads and, I wish our plants were just drought tolerant as the weeds are. That make it, but a lot of the stuff doesn't. But no, no question that it does increase the maintenance cost. But there's a little bit of offset on the mowing contract. You guys do an awesome job with what you do. And congratulations to you, Erin, you know, moving into that position. I think you've just done it seamlessly and our parks look great.
Thank you, I just wanted to add, so the, just to note, there are quite a lot of dead trees in the median. I know that that's just the water storm that just gets told. So that's just to watch for. Also, I noticed, and it's just maybe how they do control, but there's like green dye.
So you can tell where they spray it.
Right, I know where they spray it or not.
I guess that's what that is, right? Okay, I just want to be sure. I'm like, is somebody like screaming or?
That's interesting.
Right, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else, anyone? What?
We have, we have basketball leagues going on today, so all the screaming and hollering that you hear is our summer league basketball program. Joey was trying to help, but that's not an option.
So I just want to say, Erin, you're getting more comfortable in front of us every time.
She's good, we're pretty rough.
I'm getting there.
Or not so scary.
No, I had to practice a few times.
Thank you.
Should have worn the chain.
Yeah, I was going to, but.
Anything else, anyone? All right. Thanks, partners.
Yes, and Joey with IT.
He can stop sharing.
You're welcome. He did dye.
Yeah.
The dyes.
I just thought that was funny because you brought that up. That's just the median dying and it was like.
Good morning, dear council staff. This is Joey Rock, IT manager, just going over our requests and needs for my department. I have this, I have a slide for some of the accomplishments and challenges that we have. I'll open a few. I think the two main accomplishments that we've recently done will be a limited backup disaster recovery program that you guys have delivered or have approved. It's one of the most best improvements, I think, we've done for our IT infrastructure in eleven years without a care. Obviously, it's not going to stop us from getting hit, but it will allow us to recover quickly. The other one was when COVID hit. We were able to reconfigure our network at no cost to the city that allowed any employee with a personal computer to work from home. It didn't need a laptop. And obviously, that was also used during the pandemic. So we're already set for that. The main challenge is, is you have staff, my staff. We continue to add employees to the city that's more affordable for my staff. For bringing new building in, that's, that's more equipment, things like that. So I'll get into our needs. So I've been, I've actually, I've been, you know, really, that's just fancy words for the devices that are back in servers and storage used to communicate. We have four of them. They're a severe failure because they're so important. If they were to fall down, pretty much wouldn't be any connectivity or communication with our, our systems and including our phone system. They were purchased back in twenty thirteen. In twenty thirteen, we pretty much replaced all of our backend equipment. We removed both of our data centers, like one point two million dollar project. So they will no longer be supported by the manufacturer on the 30th of November this year. So what that means, we cannot buy maintenance and they will not continue to make replacement parts. So they're basically at the end of life. So the cost of replacing would be thirty one thousand dollars. And on the top of the slide, there's a really low resolution graphic of the priority-based budget program that this ties into, which is the administrative projects. And then at the bottom, I have where it ties into the street plan. So the next thing is network switches. So they are in a, that I call a satellite building. So this building will be a satellite building. It's, it's a building that's not, we don't have a data center in. It's a building that's not, we don't have a data center in. This building connects back to our data center. And what these switches do is they connect to that data center through our fiber, and they allow all the computers, phones, and wireless to work in this building. We have 21 of them throughout the city. And they're going to reach end of life in 2025. So we could wait to 2025 and replace all 21 of them at 160,000. But in order to fill that budget, I recommend doing seven per year, starting next year, which would be 2,000. And that would be up until 2025. And, or 2024, sorry. And that would double the budget. This ties into the network manager, or this budget, the strategic programs. So the next one is the Wi-Fi radios. These, again, were purchased in 2013. We have 44 of them throughout the various locations that provide guest and data network that we use. Eighteen of them will no longer be supported by the manufacturer. The cost to replace those would be very high, $1,000. So the next thing that we're requesting is fiber-optic cable discovery. So we do have a fiber optic mat. I did remove the markings on this one just for security purposes, but we don't have the documentation on our fiber. We know where it is, we know it goes down the street. But we don't know which side it's on, we don't know how deep it is, we don't know how many strands of the fiber are in that cable that's underground. It is underground, which is really good. But we need to have our fiber with community discovery, let us know where everything is, get them on GIS, and know, like I said, how many strands. They're wanting to put some new sirens on fiber. We should have those strains to cover that, but we need to know what we do. And that's what this would do is, it would basically give us all of that documentation. The next one is public safety supervisor. I used to have this position. I was dedicated to the sort of police and fire. I will say that police and fire account for a third of our health test tickets. They also, we have a separate network for the police department that we have to maintain. It has to comply with state security requirements. So when I moved back to City Hall as IT manager, we took two lieutenants, PD and one guy in fire. And we wanted to learn IT. And we trained them up, gave them extra access, and they started helping this, I guess, the life, the deal for IT for those departments. Two of them have retired, so we've taken that on. I think we need to add a position dedicated to IT for police and fire. That's going to be about 86. So the next one is how we connect our private vehicles to our network, the internet. Right now, I don't know if you're familiar with the Wi-Fi devices. It's just like a hockey puck that takes the cellular network and throws a Wi-Fi network. Right now, we have consumer-grade devices in our fiber trucks and any loses. And they're not meant to be in a hot vehicle all day. They're not meant to be on all day. If you see the article on the top right, I've asked for these in the past. So back in 2018, they were having problems where they would get hot and they'd start a fire. If you look in the bottom right, last month, they recalled 25, or 2.5 million due to the fire. So the vendor's not fixing it on their consumer grades. A lot of other APCs do use what I'm asking for, called Fair Points. They are meant to be in a vehicle all day. And the police department, I think they might have purchased, which is about $60,000 for a maximum. The last theme is GIS training. The vendor that we send our two GIS folks to train into is just increasing the price by 2,000, 250 dollars. So I mean, they have added, so they can continue to stay on tape. And I will stop on this of priorities, his requests, and needs, entertaining questions.
Joey, thank you. I've always felt that it was strange that the police department was managing so much of their IT. And I totally agree that needs to be pulled back into IT. What I would wonder is, you know, that frees up a lot of police resources, and what does that do to the police budget? You all will look at that, I'm sure, if you decide to do that. But, so that's the only position you think you need to add right now?
That's the only one we've been asking for.
Okay.
Yes.
I appreciate that clarification.
Sure.
Talk to us a little bit about how the, without impairing confidential information and security information, how's the cybersecurity working out? And how are you sleeping these days in regards to cyber attacks?
A little bit better. The disaster recovery thing is huge. Just like I said, we've been in it, and it's going to happen. Now we can recover, should be able to recover a little better, is great. And then, you know, we did partner with cyber security vendor almost a few years ago. And they monitor, we send all of the information, all the activity in our network, they monitor it 24/7. And then if they see something that kind of raises an eyebrow, they'll investigate it. And if they think it's actually an actual issue, they'll get us involved, and they'll also help us respond to it. So they're not just detecting it and managing it. They'll help us fix it when, if it happens. A lot of the peer cities, my peer cities in this area, are asking me about that service, and they're starting to participate as well.
This, I'm sorry. It seems strange to me that, you know, hackers can break down a pipeline, and yet, you know, we're a relatively small city. You're telling us you feel pretty comfortable. Am I, is there, am I in a disconnect here?
Maybe. We're in a really good spot. I really can sell you. Again, the disaster recovery, you know, if it happens, we should be covered and get back up to where we need to be quicker than we used to be able to.
So the answer is the pipeline should have been able to last?
It happens. They just don't, they didn't have the systems in place to recover it.
That becomes a manner of where the executives want to spend the money.
Save it to Congress.
Watch your name.
No.
Now you got a love IT, and you need it. And you've just done it, and they say, hey, we're not going to support this software anymore. So everybody's got to update. Makes it pretty easy to kind of do branch requests. But you know, you guys do a great job. And my one question is, if we update some of the software on Wi-Fi and things like that, does that mean the Wi-Fi system will all get better, so we can all be on a high bed and actually download it back?
We can, the new radios, we can, Wi-Fi sits, which does have better.
So we would be able to download it back in less than five minutes.
I'm not sure if that's a website problem, because everyone's using it once. I'm working with our web host to see if that's what it is. Because when I, in that same word, when you guys have problems, I do speed tests, and our speed is not an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Joey, I do want to say, you know, you guys did an amazing job for us off of COVID. And just want to acknowledge how uncomplicated all of that was in a very complicated environment. And so thank you for all the extra hard work that you guys did to keep us in forward motion. I only have one comment, and that is with the vendor app for the fiber. And, you know, I would just say, and you're probably doing this anyway, but going forward, any contracts that you do where people are laying the fiber, I would make it a requirement of that contract that they provide a map to you that shows you exactly where they're laying that fiber?
Yes, first of all, thanks for the feedback. We couldn't have done that without my team. They've done a lot to make sure everyone is happy and doing during all those weird times. But yeah, when I became director, I got rid of our current fiber manager, because they wouldn't give us that documentation. They wanted to keep it so I could go back to them to know when we needed it. And I do have to replace the business.
Excellent. That's all I have. Anybody else have a question?
So with regards to the fiber discovery, I wonder if that could be something that is stripped through with market funds? Because I think that there's, you can find what broadband systems is that.
What funds?
Our. Very good question.
And when we get into the ARPA discussion, allocation discussion, there are, I don't know, certain broadband projects that Joey has put in there and will discuss. There are some odd restrictions about it, but investing, obviously, in our broadband and expanding it. There's some desire, if not limitation, to, you know, to expand it in areas either that don't have it or low-income areas. So there's some odd tricks and tricks. We can discuss that when we do the ARPA discussion.
Anyone else?
I do, I have a comment there. So one thing that I wanted to tell you is that, you know, IT oftentimes is an afterthought. There, that's your point, really, about what happened back East. You know, and you look at all these organizations over the years, even some that would say that they felt like they had adequate, let's call it adequate, cybersecurity, firefighting, you know, technology, and then they get hit too. Even our own federal government has been hit many times. We were hit years ago with rats somewhere. And what saved us that time was that we had, we were using the tanks. And there was, there was some older stuff that was not contaminated or corrupted, and we were able to restore from that. So our backup disaster plan is really, it's not that maybe we can totally prevent it ever from happening, but we believe that we can recover from it. And that is why this man is sleeping better at night. But I did want to tell you one thing that we are going to make a change this year. You guys know for years, we've talked about what we call our VERF, the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. And so although some of that is now going to be moved under the enterprise program, we still have our yellow arm, we still have the bigger dump trucks and things like that we still need to account for. And what we call Nirvana is a level amount of funding each year, even though the actual expenditure has been changed a little bit. So it's a commitment of X dollars a year to make sure that when that truck needs to be fit or replaced or that caterpillar, then we have the money in place to do that. We have not really done that for technology. And so what we did instead is, every year, we do this. Now, a lot of what's on here is not what you would have put in that kind of a fund. Instead, you know, these are, these are projects that we see a need and we say we need to do this. But what we want to do is reach Nirvana, just like with the VERF for our technology. So we have, we challenged Joey to come up with, you know, all the replacement technology. And, you know, sometimes that gets buried in other departments, and then it gets lost. One year, you don't fund it, the next thing you know, you don't have it anymore. So this brings it, elevates it, makes it more transparent. You guys get to see it. And so we called it initially the TURF, the Technology Equipment Replacement Fund. But then we decided to simplify and call it the JRF, Joey's Equipment Replacement Fund. But that's going to be a change. And to ease into that, to get to a level that provides a level of funding, with the exception of annual CPI, one thing that we, there's a really big ticket item, and I can't remember if you've had that on your list. Okay, so it's the switches?
It's the, it's the memory, it's the hyper-conversion device. Basically, the data center is storage, memory, compute, and networking. What he's talking about is three of those, which is memory, compute, and storage. So, yeah. So not to try and talk you over the head, but the data center typically is four things. It's networking through communication, it's storage for files, it's memory and compute to process everything. Starting next year, we're going to start replacing, I have those on a replacement cycle. We bought, let's say, we bought five devices, and we buy them to five years maintenance. So I did that so we can start replacing one every year, and they get replaced. Every one gets replaced every five years. It's under maintenance until it gets replaced. And, you know, that, that alone is like 120,000. So that's trying to get it back on the replacement cycle.
So what we, what we discussed is, and partly to help us ease into this a little bit, is that each data center has five of them, so that's 10. So that's a $720,000 purchase. So what we thought, and we're going to be evaluating before we get to August, but in August, we'll have the decision or recommendation, is that maybe we lease that part. But my concern is, with technology changing so fast, if he buys two a year, by year three or year four, you may have connectivity issues. So you buy all the same technology, and in five years, you do a new lease, and we're just worried about the lease payment. So that helps us kind of ease into that Nirvana level. And so our JRF fund will be able to cover that. And, you know, for years, we've had, we've had kind of an allocation for, to replace laptops and computers and all that. But I think, you know, what gets, often gets forgotten about is all the back office stuff, the switches, the, you know, the data center and those kind of things. And that's what we want to start addressing. If we, if we own it, we need to maintain it, and we need to be prepared to replace it in the future. That's what, that's what we're talking about, so pretty excited about that. Any other questions for our JRF? We good?
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, all right, we're going to do the city manager's office now. And then I'm going to tech team that a little bit with Angie. Now, I want to, we'll finish our part here, and then we'll be right, is that okay? Okay. So then we're supposed to back team.
Is this the last department? CFO and city secretary is on this.
Okay, yes.
And we are still ahead of schedule, a lot of suspect, and so we're going to add a few things. Okay. All right, so we're going to want you to talk about the city manager's office. And right after me, we'll be going to the city secretary's office. Then we'll take a break, and then by that time, we're going to add some of the other topics. Okay, well, let's do a quick five-minute, how's that?
Oh, delicious.
Five minutes? All right, so let's go ahead and get started. We have a few more departments to do, and then at that point, we'll wrap up the departments and kind of do a little bit more of some of the strategy stuff. So city manager's office, obviously, including myself, the deputy city manager at Whitehead. But we also have some interesting things wrapped into ours. For years, we had the Mainhood Life, which we now have under Community Development. But before that, you know, we've had public information in our office, which is, you know, Denise, Barrett, and Drew have raised. So that gives us the print media, the beautiful letters we do, things like that. And then on the RTN 16, Richard and Drew. So those are addressed. And then also the grant position that we created a few years ago. And you'll remember, we started off by budgeting for a half-time person. We had, we had somebody that was in the Army Reserves that did that. She got deployed, she came back, stayed for a very short period of time. So really, over about a two-year period, we really did not run the program like we would have liked to have. So now, we have a full-time person. And so it's, there's a few tweaks that we're going to add to that in terms of cost, and you'll see that here in just a little bit. So let's go ahead and go to the next section, next page. Oh, I have it. I'm sorry, where's my? Oh. Thank you. I have to do this. I have to do this left-hand and I'm, okay, good. So I did want to say this because, as you know, PBB has been a pretty serious initiative for us. And, you know, obviously, a year ago, this was, or two years ago, this was the kind of stuff that we were getting from staff. It's kind of like, who wants to do what? And so it took a while to kind of get into the vote. We have some departments that are really embracing this and really spending time with it. And we're working through that to be able to have something that we can be proud of and something that we can really utilize. So in terms of our budget request this year, one is volunteer software. So, you know, our staff puts a lot of time right now into screening volunteers and getting them on record. We've had a very active volunteer program for years. There's been times where, you know, we've had as high as ten to equivalent, see, of about ten to fifteen full-time employees. So of course, last year with COVID, that would not have been possible. But one of the requests we have is to be able to get software to help us with this. And, you know, you can look at nineteen, so obviously, twenty twenty is an anomaly. But in twenty nineteen, the equivalent was about nine point seven. And I think the year before that was just over ten. So, you know, if it wasn't for this kind of program, we, we have people in council, I know you're aware, we do the annual awards program. We recognize some of those folks. And for years, we've had some full-time volunteers. And so this is a very important program for us. One thing that our, that Denise Perrin runs as part of the program is asking for is the software. So it's, it's a volunteer management tool. We're able to enter them into the database. It's a small subscription fee. And I'll just say this, you're hearing everything staff is asking for. You know, some things are going to make it to the budget, whether, you know, you're aware of it or not. Other things are big enough ticket items, we really need some help, you know, in terms of weight. But you're getting to see everything. So it'd be unlimited administrators, which is really good. It'll help with reporting. And we can track up to five hundred active volunteers. You can see twenty nineteen, I think that was the highest we've had, was two hundred and eighty-four. We don't envision this being an issue. And if it is, then we'll operate it at that time. So that was our first request. Unless you stop me, I'll keep on doing some of the others. We only just have a few. The other is our digital media specialist. So this is another area where we've been hearing for years of council, a desire to spend more time on social media. And quite frankly, our staff needs help with this too, so that we can, we can do that. One thing that this position would help us do is improve our engagement with our residents. And, you know, spend more time helping to build content. So, you know, Denise Perrin and Drew, they do a fantastic job. But they are two people. One focuses on the print media, including social media. The other one is primarily digital media, which includes RTN sixteen. And I think there's so much more that we can do that has to help, particularly in the area of raw content and to help manage some of the social media.
So let me, let me ask you something about that, Brian. I know that all the departments, or several departments, have their own Facebook page. Would it be consolidated to this person?
Not necessarily, but I'm, I'm sorry, okay. So the question is, we have multiple departments that actually have their own Facebook page. And we also have departments that produce their own print material, such as like the RCC, their catalog and calendar. The library does the same thing. So the question is, would this position centralize or eliminate the need for somebody to manage all those other sites? It does not. Instead, what I believe will happen, it needs to enhance what we're doing now and address areas we're not really getting into. So to help with social media management, you know, please fire those that run their own programs. I think what you will have is a higher degree of coordination and collaboration, yes. But I don't think that we're talking about eliminating those. Because in some cases, they are the entry-level source for that material, particularly for stuff that needs to get out very quickly.
Brian, didn't mean to snap my fingers at you.
Uh, that could have caught my attention. Who has the other?
I guess I could just turn it off.
So we've talked a lot about marketing the city over the years. And would this be able to have a primary focus on marketing the city? Or just responding to citizens, which, you know, we've got to be more strategic than that?
We, we are approaching this as more proactive there. That does not necessitate the fact that there does not need to be a reactive part of this too, which is addressing questions and things like that through social media. We see this more as proactive. So in other words, getting ahead of the curve, building education campaigns, marketing campaigns and those kind of things. That's how we view it.
Thanks.
So obviously, this, this helps meet one of our key goals, which is to actively educate and engage and communicate with the community through a variety of channels. And as you know, there are channels we're still not really into. We had an employee with a Nextdoor account that got us into the Nextdoor area arena. But there's still, we're not into Snapchat. We're not into, you know, not every single digital platform. But from time to time, you know, some of these are starting to grow, or we may need to have a presence into. So we're not quite always into all of those. But I think what we are into, particularly so Facebook and Twitter and some of those, we are spending a lot of time with. But I think the gap is what we're talking about, is that we're not spending enough time proactively marketing the city and communicating with our residents from that regard. And I hate to say it this way, but I'll, but we'll be blunt a little bit. It's more hiddenness. So when we have a bond election come out there, there's, you know, everybody gives up for this level of activity. But then when something comes up in the moment that we don't normally deal with or don't, this is something we haven't really addressed in the past, then we're all sitting around trying to figure out, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? When we really need somebody out there managing that part of it. And somebody who then develops institutional memory for, you know, these are the kinds of campaigns we're going to run under these kind of circumstances. And that's how we can really get ahead of these things. So in terms of position summary, we promote city activities. So that, that's one that would help with that. Programs and services, create and manage content for social media, post and campaigns. So this person would take a lead at times. So in other words, Denise and Drew still do what they do best. But it also would provide help for them in terms of, like, you know, Drew, the specific discussion we had with Drew is, you know, he writes a lot of his own content, like for our show and things like that. This person could help with that. That would free him up to do what he does best and not to have to take some of the shortcuts, you know, that he might take from time to time when he has to digitize, you know, some of that content. Website publishing, writing, graphics generation. So this will be really critical, is the writing part, which is the content. So Drew will handle, for example, the digital, the digital part of this, but it's the content that this person can assist with. And then supporting and implementing digital communication for citizen engagement and traffic, digital media management, or digital media channels obscuring. So that's kind of the summary of what we see this position being able to do. Working alongside our community relations manager, creative service producer, sharing content across all communication platforms. We actually, this is kind of interesting. We have some software that helps us do that. So that when Denise, for example, publishes on the website, it automatically goes to Facebook. It automatically goes to Twitter. But there are a lot of programs out there, you cannot do it automatically. You know, they're proprietary information. So if you want to engage in that platform, you have to go and then do that individually. And some aren't even as easy as cut and paste. Assisting in development of the overall social media strategy would also be one. And, you know, and we have some intel on this, like the audience preferences. That's, you know, Denise is able to run a report that tells us, when are people actually logging into Facebook? So we know that. And so she knows that between six thirty, eight o'clock every night is when most people, you know, the kids are fed and bathed and in bed. And mom or dad's going to sit down now, they're going to go and start scrolling through some of their Facebook page or whatever. That's, that's a prime target for us to release a post. And so she knows that. She can prepare it during the day. But she knows that it won't go out till, say, seven o'clock or whatever the timeframe she's trying to hit. So this costs about, the salary range, about forty-six, seventy thousand dollars. That does not include benefits. That is purely the salary. And so this is, this is a request that we're making this year that is, that we're going to be considering for how we prioritize. I think, any questions on that one? Okay. Oh, so grant coordinator. One thing I also want to say about our grant coordinator, having a full-time grant coordinator is just, particularly in this environment, has just absolutely rocked our world. Particularly ones as experienced as the individual we hired out of New Orleans. The expertise they have, the federal level strength and the technical knowledge they have about grants, period. Not just merely the, how do I sell this, you know, in terms of the narrative I'm writing, but also understanding the nuances about what, what we need to put in those requests to be able to get it. And in some cases, being able to have a realistic conversation with staff to say, you know, we, we're not going to spend that level of time to go after that grant, which is so competitive and we don't have the right story to tell. So basically, the ability to say, that's not the right grant to go after. Even though it's a full-time person, you still can't go after a grant in the world. It's just impossible. But what we are doing is, has been pretty, pretty effective after. So what we, what we're really doing here today, and again, this goes back to where everybody's just telling you guys what we're working on. So is that when our, when our budget was first done, you'll remember a few years ago, it was based on a part-time person. So now we've kind of done with this. Now that we have a full-time person, we know what our real costs are going to be. So we're going to tweak the operating budget to make sure we have the training, the registration, those kind of things that are in there, travel, dues, some of those costs there too. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but it's several thousand dollars, as you can see, to make sure. Because again, that was an area we did not spend a lot of time on when we made that position full-time. And we know what we need to do there. But more back to this. So, you know, the establishment of our grant office promotes, you know, not only operational excellence, it touches every department in the city. Police are finding more ways to use them. We've always had a really good, you know, grant, you know, application effort and buyer. But we have a lot of departments that need help. We have not spent that kind of time with them. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Angie. She's going to talk to you about some of the other grants that, that they're applying for. We do realize that there will be grants that we won't get, even once we put in that kind of effort. But if you don't ask, we won't get it all, so.
So I probably don't have a microphone because I'm loud, but I will use it and I will talk a little softer than I normally do. The great thing about Ron is Ron has experience in grants. So he worked for the city of New Orleans, he worked for the Port of New Orleans. He's also a Texas lieutenant's attorney. So he knows where to find those grant opportunities. And he knows a lot of the information that's back information that can help the department get the right information for the right grant. So these are just a few of some of them that he has recently applied for. The Bloomberg, did I try to say that word? Yep, that word that Brian has said. So what, what Ron is focusing his attention on is finding grants that fit within our strategic priorities. So when he does a slideshow for us, and you'll start seeing these updates, it talks about what strategic priority does it fall into? And then this is the asphalt art grant that we applied for last year. What Ron's learned is most cities apply a couple of times before they're awarded. And that's pretty much the case for a lot of grants. So they have re-applied for this one, working very closely with the Arts and Humanities Commission. Another one is a solid waste grant. So this is the REB grant that you saw. He has now applied for the next round of solid waste grants to partner with our police department on cleaning up encampments along the take line. So the police department is able to identify those. The community services division is able to go out and help the folks find somewhere else to be besides our camp, besides our lip front. And then the new grant will fund a trailer and ATV to be able to go out and get to those locations and get those things cleaned up. This particular grant was, we're just now wrapping up the final pieces of it. We saw the van picture yesterday. And so we're partnering with KRB to really up our recycling, encouraging people to recycle. Texas Reads is another grant that he has just applied for and is in the process of going through. You can see here some of the deadlines he manages. And imagine that he manages these deadlines for every single grant. And so every grant is very labor intensive, not only for him, but also for our finance department. So Ken Townsend in finance helps him with the financial side to the grants, making sure that it's getting accounted. Some of our grants are reimbursement grants. So the REB grant, for example, is a reimbursement grant. So not only do we have to meet our own purchasing procedures, we also have to meet COGS purchasing procedures. And they're not always a hundred percent the same. And then we pay for it and then we get reimbursed. Yes, mayor?
So these don't count dollar amounts, so I don't have any idea if these are like million-dollar grants, thirty thousand dollar grants. So as you do this in the future, if you could help with that? And then as you get this presentation, if you could help with that?
Oh, well, for sure. The REB grant was about fifty thousand dollars. The Texas Reads is a smaller grant. I think it's only about twenty-five thousand dollars at memory service, am I right? Like I said, we are in the process of learning up exactly what a grant snapshot report looks like so that you're not getting more information than you need, but you can see kind of what we're working on. The Gray Muzzle Grant is a grant geared at, he partnered with Friends of Rowlett, and it's geared at providing money for medical requests for dogs. I do not know what the total amount of this grant application was, but he worked very closely with our friends group, gathered all the information they need, and then it will provide medical expense help to the animal shelter. The first responder will help. So this is one that we're getting ready to apply for. We just, if you remember, replied for, applied for and received one first responder, which gives JJ and Chad Colwell over at the Crisis Intervention Program a mental health coordinator. So it will provide a mental health coordinator salary for, I believe, two years. And it is also renewable. So they'll have a resource right there with a social work background. It's not a PD background, it's a social work background to help them find services for these folks that they're helping PD handle. This is a second one. This is the one that just came to city council. We had to pre-approve a resolution in order to apply for that one. I think that's it. That's kind of just a snapshot. Like I said, in the next thirty days, you should start getting a monthly snapshot. Brian and I have kind of been working through what that may look like. Ron will be here after a while. He's also taken on all of our ARPA in association with finance to make sure that we're really applying. He's, he's treating it as kind of like a city grant, right? So departments are working with him on what fits the criteria and working with Brian on how we roll that out. Any grant questions or Brian questions?
I would like to talk again about the possibility of developing an app for the city. I know that our website is mobile-friendly, but really, the way you know of the future is to have apps for communication. I don't think you all have looked into that yet. I brought this up a couple of years in a row. I don't think it's probably an expensive purchase, but it's probably a maintenance thing. So, but I think it's important for us to look at that. We have a city app. It is not very interactive. I would classify it as not real operative. Yeah. So let me rephrase that. I would like us to look at revising and increasing our, our app. Um, my other, do anybody else have a comment on that? Uh, my other comment is, um, in this whole budget process, we need, I think we need to have an, and potential May bond elections. I think we need to lay out a town hall meeting schedule. So I don't know what you have in your mind for a budget town hall, but I think we need to probably figure that out and get that on the calendar right now. Um, because a lot of people are traveling and moving around.
Okay, we'll make that happen.
If we think we need a budget town hall.
We did one two years ago, didn't we? Not, we didn't do a lot of it since COVID. I thought we did it one two years ago.
Yeah, and you know, who knows? I, I, I think it would be good to touch base with the public on here's the budgeting and here's the decisions we made and here's what's coming down, uh, soon to, you know, uh, in regards to May stuff. So it's kind of like dual purpose. Here's what the budget looks like and here's up and coming stuff that you're going to be considering.
Yeah, I think it's smart. We did it two years ago with Dusty B2. It was COVID years and we had to, but I thought it was a form of this for sure.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have a question about the mental health coordinator. Has that person been hired yet?
I think they are in the process of hiring that person. I know they even posted her job, but I haven't been able to ace it.
Okay, so I'm looking for that position. I'm excited to have that person. Uh, and, uh, and then also, uh, I know that, that Ron is working on so many more things than just the stuff that we landed there. I know he's working on some EPA, uh, stuff for our water quality. And so there's just, there's tons of bright stuff that's out there. Uh, and to your point, you know, we can't do them all. Uh, some of them, just there are two burdens that we can administratively try to do, but, uh, but I just think he's doing an excellent job. So excited that we have a full-time qualified, uh, person out there in the grant application. So good job on that.
Ron's the guy that you say, hey, we should do, and he's like, oh, great, let's fill it up. So great resource to us.
Could you have any other questions for City Manager's Office before I wrap up? Okay. For the right, Laura, Home Works City Secretary. You have the same number. I'm sorry? Am I confused here? I don't know.
I put it in my book.
But it isn't fine.
Cause I can't do that.
Right, sorry. So this is for the three budgets for City Council, City Secretary and Action Center. All three budgets are remaining flat pending that we're not making any requests. But I do want to touch on certain items. And these three are just a drop in the bucket compared to the other departments. And the City Council budget remains flat pending any City Council discussion. But I do want to touch on the association dues. The request does remain the same for the upcoming year, but some dues were decreased due to COVID-19 and a concern of the organizations for the city's abilities to participate. And so those dues were lowered in some cases. And so looking towards things becoming more normal, those costs may increase. So once we go through this next cycle, we'll have a better.
Can you hand me the microphone, guys? Having the chance to tell you, Laura, the DRC, DOWS Regional Mobility Coalition dues will be seventy-five percent of that 4448. Uh, last year they were fifty percent. This next year they'll be seventy-five percent. And I, tell me if this is not the right time to talk about this, but you know, we took off, um, uh, National League of Cities. Um, is this the right time to talk about that?
Sure.
Okay, so I just wanted to touch base with, with council again on this. Um, you know, how do you feel about the decision we made? Did we change it? Does, you know, there was a lot of involvement by National League of Cities during the COVID year and during the legislative session. I would just like to hear from you all of, of, you know, whether we keep it as is or if we get back in.
Uh, there are other things that we need to take another look at it. Um, but you know, one of the reasons that, um, that we got out of the NLC, um, probably the biggest reason was the cost. Uh, it was over ten thousand dollars a year, much higher than anything else that, that we're members of. And, uh, and so we were in a very tight budget year. I think this was a couple of years ago. And, uh, you know, we just had to make some hard decisions. Um, however, I think I did see an email, uh, in the last week or so that, um, that made me think that they may have reduced, uh, their membership fee. And so I, you know, they were very active during COVID, did a lot of good. And, uh, and so I think it's worth at least having another look at.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I, you know, um, Martha and I got involved in more granular detail that year before we made that decision to make sure we were informed and, and able to make the right decisions. And we really have been removed from NLC since then. Um, if we as a council decide we want to, to jump back in, I really think it's important that we have a councilperson that keeps that as their focus. You know, we have a couple, one or two council people here today that pay a lot of attention to what's going on at TML. Um, I'm an officer on our, our Region 13, TML, uh, board. Um, so what I don't want to happen is, you know, we decided to pay dues for NLC and we get a few emails, but nobody's really paying attention to it. That, that would be the thing.
So I'm looking at their FY 2021 membership dues and for our population, it will be fifty-six hundred. So it is a lot less.
Yeah, uh, and let me, let me correct that, Laura helped me. But that was tax 21. That was the ten thousand dollars that we dropped and, and I think that was a good decision.
Yeah. But. I'm not asking to bring tax 21.
You did, yeah. Uh, but, um, but I, I do think that, that we should have another look at, um, uh, this.
Well, this is the time to make that decision. So have another look at, I'm not sure what else we would look at. I, I think we can make that decision today and should make that decision today. Do we want to get back into National League of Cities? And if we do, who's going to own it, if you will, uh, just like we do other organizations?
Exactly, and that's, that's the look at it.
Thoughts, council?
Um, I mean, during, during the pandemic, I still receive emails from them that just ends up in my email. And I, I do think that there is valuable information. I mean, I'm getting all that information around having paid for that. So, um, I don't know. I mean, I think that you want that decision made today, right now.
You know, if you are a member, you can participate in other events. It's not just communication coming at you. So in my mind, if we want to spend that money and become a member, we need to be active in that organization to some extent. If we're not going to be active and we're just going to receive emails, there's no reason to change what we're doing. Um, so if anyone on this council would like to own an NLC, I hate that word, but, but you know, and make sure we're active in that. I think we can make a decision to re-up. If not, I think we leave it as is. But state your opinion as the microphone goes by you.
Okay, here's, here's my opinion on that because, um, the mayor did attend their conference. And, uh, and I can tell you, I, I think that TML offers a lot more bang for the buck that is applicable to what we do as a city. And it's just like the grants, you can't do everything. And so, uh, you know, if we get some good information, uh, from the emails, um, I, I don't know what we would do as far as being more active other than, you know, going to the, uh, going to the conference. I know that, uh, you can network with a lot of people from around the nation, but as far as, um, being an organization where we could have an effect, uh, I, I don't really see that as benefiting at the. And so I'm, I'm much more supportive of, of TML in that aspect.
So I'm looking, looking on the website now. Um, they only have two, uh, annual conference meetings and that's the City Summit, which is anywhere in the country, this year in Salt Lake City. And then Congressional City Summit, which is, you know, you can see for that. Um, other than that, there's committees. Uh, I'm kind of of the same opinion that we get so much value out of TML and, and they do, they, they have such a more direct impact on us. Um, then this, I think fifty-six hundred dollars can go somewhere else.
I, I agree with that as long as, um, the mayor stays active within U.S. Conference of Mayors. Cause you know, T, uh, National League of Cities is, is, uh, federal level, not just state level. Um, and you know, when I turn them out in May, I would highly encourage the next mayor to stay active in U.S. Conference of Mayors and I would highly encourage this council to continue funding them because I do think that has a lot of influence, um, across the nation in regards to policies that affect individual cities. So it has much more influence than NLC. Um, so anyway.
I, I agree with that sentiment. I mean, if we're not going to have somebody that's super helpful editor or I'm using audio on it, then I would write in that unit. I think that's why we dropped it in the first place.
I agree.
And thank you for the discussion. Brownie agrees. Hannah agrees. My name, February.
Okay, so that's all I have for the council. The City Secretary's Office and Action Center touch all of the city's priorities, which is strategic plan, whether it be through the agenda publication process, calls to the Action Center open records request or through the records management program. Again, this City Secretary budget stays flat. The only additions are the contractual computer software maintenance increases and the increased cost for, uh, elections. I just wanted to cover a couple of PBB items that, there are more, but I'm just going to highlight a couple of these. These are the legislative actions, which are the organizations and resolutions passed by council. Other information requests, these are external, does not include internal, whether it be other departments or, um, other cities contacting us informally. And so far this year, we've had nine hundred eighty-three open records requests. Yes, ma'am, I think we've all mentioned one stop, um, kind of covered used, but that's really what the Action Center is. It's the front line for the city. It's the first contact some people have ever made with the city. And we'd like to continue to market the Action Center as the one contact we need to remember, know, to access all things the city related and to get away from the citizen Action Center model because our customers have us more than just our citizens. So email actioncenter@rowlett.com or call the Action Center, which is the four one two sixty one, head of them. Again, this budget remains flat and it only increases the contractual obligation for computer software. One of the PBB items that we monitor is call volume. This fluctuates due to hot topic issues. There was a decrease in last year reflecting the winter storming when calls reported to an actual cell phone because of inability to use the system the way we thought it would be used. But I believe you know from IT that there are steps that they've taken to enable us to utilize the volume system remotely and not be, not have to miss out on those important calls. One of the other items is the call handling time. Again, fluctuations due to hot topic issues. Average call time varies based on the customer issues, coordination with other departments, uh, regarding processes or contacts helps facilitate response and conclusion of calls. When transferring calls, we try to transfer to a message as a last resort. We're always trying to get them a live person. And time handling calls can be extended due to attempts to reach a live person. And oftentimes people will call and will answer the phone to the Action Center and they're surprised that they get a live person and they're very excited that they didn't just get to a phone tree, which I understand is rare to be contacted at this party. And another thing is we have a lot of our contact information on the website. There are some cities that don't have any contact information on the website and you can't figure out how to reach anybody.
Hey, Laura, uh, do you guys, uh? Do you guys track the subject matter of the calls? That, that would be an interesting, uh, statistic to have. Like I, when I look at these increased calls, I wonder how much of it is related to bulk trash pickup. Uh, you know, it, it would just be nice to know. Uh, and, and I don't know how burdensome that might be for, um, for your team, but, um, that it would be good to know what the hot topics are for council so that, so that we can kind of get a little glimpse of, of what's coming in as far as requests go.
Correct. So in answer to your question, we don't currently track the topic of each phone call. We do track the customer service requests such as water leaks, potholes, street repairs, alley repairs, things of that nature. We email, um, FCC regarding trash calls. So we can access that information, but we can start to look into finding a way to, you know, take more next to a subject or something like that.
Yeah.
We can look into that.
Be good to have that feedback.
So for the past year, the City Secretary's Office and Action Center, I'm proud to say that we've been able to provide all of our operations and services throughout the COVID-19 without interruptions. So anybody trying to access our services didn't see any change during that time. And a lot of that is in part to IT's facilitating our ability to have staff work from home and offer those, um, services. And also along Joey and Drew facilitated virtual meetings for council and planning and zoning throughout the time, timeframe. So before I get to the questions, for staffing issues, I don't anticipate a need for an increase in staff until we transition to a new municipal complex. As part of the facilities assessment discussion, we discussed, uh, with the City Manager's Office, a possible reception area that would be an offshoot of the Action Center and then we would need additional staff for that. But as of now, we have no requests. So are there any questions?
I just want to say that this is the first year in the budget that I have, I am not saying we need more administrative support and that's because of, um, the, the increased coordination between, um, you and me and the level of service has been very, very high and I appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Mayor, uh, Council, at this time, we're going to take a fifteen minute break. We are ahead of schedule as we mentioned earlier. So when we come back, uh, you're going to go ahead and do the ARPA, um, uh, discussion. Then we're going to take our lunch break and we'll do the legislative update. And then we're going to go ahead and do our RAPA and our PBB discussion. And then we may be getting out of here a little early today. So, uh, let's wait, fifteen minute break.
I need to ask you a question.
Sorry.
I, I'll do it online.
Okay, I'm, I'm on. So let's. So let's go and get started with our next topic. Now, as we mentioned earlier, we are ahead of schedule. So today, we have our grand coordinator, Ron Harper, with us. And as I, we were bragging on Ron earlier, there's a, he brings a huge amount of strength to our team in terms of experience and expertise, the ability to read down to the fine detail and realize maybe what we probably shouldn't be asking for, maybe where we can. So now coordination, he's doing with staff, we're extremely happy to have him on board with us. So this next topic is to talk about how we would allocate the $6.8 million we're getting under the American Rescue Plan. And, you know, just to say that every city and county and state across the country are getting an allocation from that act. Now, the act is much bigger than that. Here it is. So let's just talk a little bit about what the act is. American Rescue Plan Act was a, this is economic stimulus plan by the federal government, and there are major components to it. So there's individual assistance that the Treasury has sent directly to individuals. There's business assistance. There's multiple programs and subprograms within the total, and the city of Ralette, along with other local government, are a beneficiary as well. So there still are some restrictions on how money can be spent. So for example, early on, we were very confused, extremely confused, with how the allocation methodology was coming out. You know, how would a city the size of Ralette with over 70,000 population get $6.8 billion and run across the lake and Rockwall? You know, they would get over $10 million, and they have like 46,000, 47,000 people. And Saxon, which is even smaller, getting almost as much as Ralette. So there was a lot of confusion about that initially. In addition, there was some confusion about why would the federal government allow us to spend money on water and sewer, but not on roads and bridges and alleys, you know, and things like that, other infrastructure? So since that time, there has been some clarification on why that is. One thing that we understand from President Biden is that he was hoping that roads and bridges would come out of the infrastructure programs that they're trying to get through the federal government right now, and that was one of the reasons why they did not include that in this. But regardless of the whys and wherefores, we're getting $6.8 million in over two years. We've already got the first half sitting in the bank, so, and then next year, we would get the other $3.4 million. So overall, $6.5 billion was set aside for local governments, $45 billion of that going to cities with 50,000-plus community members for the sake of the public that may be watching. That was the magic population number that the federal government established. So basically, over 50,000, there was a modified formula that they use from the block grant methodology.
Let me show you how to use it.
Okay, we'll try this one then. All right, so overall, if you're over 50,000 population, there was a modified CBG formula that they used, and that takes into account a lot of issues, such as average housing value and other criteria. But if you're under 50,000 population, it was just based on a pure per capita amount, and that's one of the reasons why it has created this level of disparity across the country. But regardless, the money can be spent to provide services that were cut due to revenue losses. That was really instrumental during the pandemic, making necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, responding to the cost of COVID-19 and its impacts, and then providing premium pay even to essential workers or grants to businesses that employ essential workers.
Why are you looking at me like that?
Well, you're reporting outside.
I'm doing this.
See what you saw. Bird, it's a bird.
Testing one, two, three. So the money that's worded, and we'll probably get into it in more detail, it says, provided services that were cut due to revenue losses caused by the pandemic, making necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband. Are those two separate concepts?
Yes, they're two separate concepts.
Because that's not how it's worded there.
Yeah. Two separate concepts.
Good.
All right. All right, so Ralette is getting $6.2 million. We've already received the first $3.4 tranche. We will get another one approximately about a year. And it does cover the costs through 2024, count of the year 2024. So basically, it's about three years that this program's in effect. Now, even though it sells, and this is true, technically, the cost must have been incurred beginning on March 3rd, 2021, the first year's revenue loss, the calculated loss, is our last fiscal year. So in terms of the revenue losses, you can do revenue losses for up to three years. So, and it's based on a calculated formula, and essentially, what they're trying to do with the formula is to say that if we had not had the pandemic, you should be on a three-year trend in terms of your income. So if you were growing 5% per year, and the pandemic cannot happen, then the presumption is that fiscal year 2020, we should have been 5% higher than the three-year trend. And the next year, we should be 5% higher than, and the next year, 5% higher than. We have done some of the analysis. There was actually a software program that the GFWA, the Government Finance Officers Association, has put out. We're evaluating that. It does not look like Ralette would be able to tap into that area very much. There's some maybe, but we're still looking into that to see how. Because once you apply that, let's say, let's say that for us, it was a million dollars, then Ralette can spend that billion dollars on anything. So you're not restricted then to the things that they say you can or can't spend that money on. Now, in principle, we may want to use it that way, but that was a restriction that is lifted once we apply that against revenue losses. For the most part, we won't be able to get enough out of that to be able to do much with. The other thing is water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. I will sell, though it's not on there, storm drainage is also included with stormwater, so that's a possible utility there. We can respond to COVID-19 emergency costs, and that's across the board, much like our CARES money, which we have a slide on too. We can spend it to help with our businesses. We can spend it to help with individuals. So there's other things that we can do with that money. Revenue replacement for the provision of government services, premium pay for essential workers. There is a lot in there about essential workers, so there's a huge recognition in this act to make sure that we're doing things that helps essential workers and not just, you know, not necessarily just every worker. So there are some key things that are ineligible. So one of those is revenue resulting from a tax cut. So early on, when this first came out, there were some cities that said, hey, we're going to reduce our tax rate and want to use this money to offset it, and you can't do that. So that's one thing that you can't get away with. The other thing, you cannot fix your pension fund. If you have a pension fund that's broken, you can't. We are very strong. We're one of the strongest retirement systems in the country. We have very high funding rate, so that's not an issue we would have. But you may have read articles about some cities, Houston and Fort Worth, that have really been struggling with funding their pension systems. So there were cities initially, early on, that wanted to tap into that to help fix that, but you can't, you can't use it for that. You can't use it for roads and bridges. So that's an area that was carved out specifically, or not included, I should say, so it's excluded. So there were some things that you cannot do with the money. And, you know, just like with the CARES Act, there's still a lot of unknowns. Ron was telling me earlier this week that there is at least an FAQ that they have finally released, which is helpful. But you'll remember with the CBG CB funds, it was three months or longer before we really felt like we had strong enough guidance to really spend the dollars that we were getting through that source of revenue. And that's the one where there's a lot more, usually a lot more tricks to it that we have to be very cautious about so we don't spend money that we have to get back to the federal government at some point. So what we're going to do, we're going to go over some of the requests, and just so you kind of know how we've done this. Ron is approaching this, these funds, as if he is managing an adowment or a grant. So essentially, departments are making requests, he's going through to check eligibility, and so we've kind of, it's almost like our departments have been asking for grand dollars through, as if we're going through an external organization a little bit. It's really going to help us with future management of it. But this is where we're at right now. You're going to see three pages, which you have in front of you. One is on the water and sewer request, then we have a page for some of the broadband stuff, and then we have a page for just some miscellaneous items as well. I know this is a little hard to see, but this is why it's in front of you. It was because of so many requests, it has a small spot size, but, so just to go through some of these, in total, about $24 million. Now, what is the benefit of the city with these programs? Well, some of these, we put off for a longer period of time. For example, we don't have a funding strategy at this point to replace, to put in generators to all sewer lift stations. That's $1.8 million. So what we have instead, we were trying to pick away at it, like maybe one lift station a year, and, you know, that takes 13 years to get them all done. So that's not a good solution. We have our waterline looping project. So there are still some areas in town where we have dead-end waterlines, and every once in a while, we've got to go out and blow those out and clean that water out for people if you're on the end of the line. Not to mention sometimes your pressure could drop off when we have an issue that we have to solve for. We have our groundwater storage tank. So there are, there are opportunities that we have with these funds to downwind lift station abandonment. You may remember that when we built the Bayside Sewer Lift Station, we were going to, once it was fully operational, we were going to be able to abandon three other sewer lift stations. Ralette has 25 or 26 sewer lift stations in town because of our topography, and so each one of those is expensive to build and to maintain and to operate. And so this would, you know, we have some that are on the list that we are going to have to pay cost to abandon in the future, and, but yet, in doing that, we're making a more efficient system. So there's, that's an opportunity for us. Dickson Sewer Line Upgrade. So that's another project that gives us the ability to do something that otherwise is going to have to show up in that three, in that $7 million a year in bonds that we're issuing. Some of the other stuff would not, would have to be funded by our pay-as-you-go cash, and so that's another area where, so there is a real opportunity for us to do some things, to shore up some areas that we probably have some vulnerabilities, which is why our number one priority up here is the generators for the sewer lift stations. That's an area where every storm, and, you know, yes, you may, you know, the ice storm a few years ago might have been a once-in-a-fifty-year event. The severe winter storm this year might have been a once-in-a-hundred-year event, but every year, there are two or three events, whether it's just high winds or a major storm that comes through, or something that causes power to go out, and then we're sitting around, dancing around. Our team is out there running down to all the lift stations that are without power, and they are pumping it down, and they go on to the next one, pumping it down, and trying to avoid a spillover. We need generators for those lift stations. And, you know, and we may be able to do some other things with the rest of the money, but I will tell you, it is the number one priority, and I believe is where we have the most vulnerability. We also have about $1 million in broadband opportunities. So staff, Joey, has identified potential programs. Now, initially, when we had our first blush at this, before we started digging into the details, you know, we knew that there was an opportunity. We've got to build fiber down to Sapphire Bay, and so, you know, that was $80,000 to $100,000. So that's obviously on the list, but we knew that we were going to have to do that at some point. But as we started getting into it and realizing other things that could be included in the broadband, you can see there are some other projects up here. We can do some more on our firewalls. There's also some, some of the discovery reconfiguration. And I cannot remember, based on what Joey was talking about earlier, one of the things on his list, is that in the 350 engine, do we know from somebody? He asked for, I think, what was it, $30,000 or $40,000 or $1,000? Okay, so, so thank you, Robert. So next time, I'll start with an agent officer, so, yes. So you'll remember, when we had that discussion with Joey earlier, one of the things that he identified as a, as a critical request this year was about $40,000 to $50,000 to do the assemblies for our entire fiber optic system. We don't found where some of those lines are at a time. We don't always know how deep they are. And just to say, they were built in PGBT. We had gone into a program with GISB to build the conduit for so much of our, we were just starting really our fiber optic line. And although, although it was marked, there was still a question and just enough of a lack of knowledge that the contractor for TxDON or ATTA caught that fiber wire down Main Street while they were building PGBT with an auger and ripped out the conduit for our rec center, for the high school, thickening city hall, and there was a cost associated with that, but there was some argument in there that there were places where we were supposed to have that fiber optic line or conduit built at a certain depth, and there were clearly some areas that it weren't. And then the question was, was it not only, it was too shallow, but instead of being here, it was over here? And so they ended up doing their auger and ended up catching it. So it's a real thing, and so he doesn't need to do that, so there's an opportunity there. Obviously, we talked about the fiber to Sapphire Bay, and then some of the switches that we can do. All of these things are investments in broadband infrastructure that would qualify as projects that we can do. And then just on this last page, it's just a hodgepodge of a few things. So for example, grant administration. So there's going to be some costs associated with us managing these grants. You heard from our finance director yesterday that she's asking for an additional senior accountant, and one of the ways that we are proposing to find that is through some grant funds, and not just this, although this will be a starting point for the next couple of years. But, you know, there's a, if we did not have all the grants, then we may not need an additional accountant to help manage it, even though we are inundated by other tools, such as our toolbox, such as the PIDs and the TURs and some of the other things. But if we didn't have the grants, on the other hand, we wouldn't be able to accomplish as much as if we're doing. So there's a trade-off, and one of those trade-offs is administration. So that's one of the things that we're asking for, is that regardless of decisions that we make, we set aside up to 10% of this to help with our administrative overhead for to manage these programs. And then just some of the other hodgepodge of asks. There's tablets with Wi-Fi hotspot. I assume that was the library, so the library, about $6,500. And then the possibility, I think, community development asked for that, and I don't see, I think we were in all, the Neighborhood Empowerment Program. So I don't see her, okay, community development. So I don't see her, okay, community development.
Park was her new neighborhood planning. She submitted that to Ron. He may be able to address some additional questions. But in inheriting the neighborhood planning division, she's set up an entire team. And it includes, you know, neighborhood programs. It includes cleanups in neighborhoods. They're gonna do a lot of different stuff with that program.
All right. And so before we, we start asking council for feedback on where we might allocate these funds, I do want to let you know where we're at with our CARES money. So as you know, we received almost $3.9 million to various funding sources. Dallas County CRF, also at the state level. And will be some CPG types of funds that buckets of money at the state level we were, or the county level we were able to apply for, which we call the CESF. So council, you remember we have set aside through various iterations of several, what we call robust funding cycles. Did we finish four? Okay, we did four full cycles. So we have spent $996,000 now on helping our local businesses with the impacts of the pandemic. There's about $76,000 left out of the allocation that council made. We did another update of this allocation, you remember, in January, where we made some additional tweaks. In terms of individual assistance, not so much. We had spent $72,000. We've worked with the Salvation Army. We've tried to work with some other entities to try to help manage this part of it. But we still have money there, almost $480,000 that we have not been able to figure out how to allocate to help, to help with individual assistance or those requests haven't been made. Food pantry, some of our nonprofits, about $50,000. So we still have about $50,000 left out of the allocation that council made. City's currently expensive, about 1.2 million. We've spared, we still have about $187,000 left there. That will be out over the course of the next few months. And then finally, there was a, just a block of dollars that we set aside which we call clawback. And it's the recognition that out of such an expensive endeavor, almost $3.8 million, what if, what if you spent some funds that the treasury later say, no, doesn't qualify? And there would have to be some sort of clawback. Every day we know more than we do before. So, so we are prepared to have a discussion with council. Is 750 still around about? Maybe it should be 500, 600? Maybe it should be all $3.8 million, who knows? But, but you know, or you know, so, but, and, and I'll say this. Those funds are now 100% RALI funds. So you don't have any restrictions on the 750.
Or the 1.5?
Of the one, Mayor?
She's adding it all, but.
I don't think we have restrictions.
What's left is, well, yeah, you're right.
I don't think we have restrictions on the 1.5. We have commitments we've made that we would have to recommit at the council level, but we don't have restrictions.
Mayor, you're right. Right. So once we made that application, the treasury changed the rules. If you remember, amended the rules last September. And when they did that, it allowed us to be able to apply all the public safety costs against that. And when we did that, we wiped out those funds. And then so this is all policy now. It's no longer treasury restricted. It's policy restricted however we allocate those funds. So I wanted to make sure that you saw this before you started making any other final decisions related to the ARBA funds.
I kind of like toss a bullet in that, you know, is it a million two out there in a capital?
Land acquisition, Mayor.
Land acquisition, is it a million two?
Yeah, around about 1.2 million.
That we have reserved for future land acquisitions. So that's another pot of money that we should be making a decision with hand in hand with all this.
Good point. And here a little bit, I'll have, when we pull that other slide back up to kind of show what we've identified so far after we do this part of the file. But the mayor is right. So in addition to the 1.5, we also have that 1.2. And then we identified possible surplus this year, another half billion there. And then we still have some money left over to allocate when we did the January discussion.
You don't, yeah. Do you not have on here the generator for the community center? Is that because it's not ARPA? Are we calling it ARPA? Is that what it's called?
Sure.
Is that because it's not ARPA qualified?
We're calling it ARPA.
Okay. Is that because it's not ARPA qualified?
Right. That's correct.
But it couldn't be, kick this, this CARES funding. It's not CARES funded, yes. I'm asking.
That bucket, yes. Bucket one versus bucket two.
So we're, is it two, bucket three?
At bucket three.
Yes. Back on, you know, a little while ago when you were talking utility sewer and water. Y'all can't hear me?
No.
I hope.
I gotta figure myself out.
It's hot.
You said we're going to have, you've got two things up here. Downlock Lift Station abandonment and College Park Lift Station abandonment. When you abandon those, do they have generators associated with them?
No, they're on the long list and smallest. And it's a good, good point you're bringing up. If you have anything else, because it's a story I'm gonna tell with it, but.
Listen, I was just gonna say, generators are even more.
So years ago, and I don't remember who put this together, but there were a series of pictures that showing how Rowland has grown since inception. And in like a lot of communities like this, you start off with your core area, your town hall, main street area. And then neighborhoods start building up and then you annex those neighborhoods. And sometimes they don't always have the quality infrastructure that you want. And so over time, we ended up annexing our way to the entire city of Rowland landmass. And, and when you start to look at that, that's where a lot of those sewer lift stations would have been built over time to serve only a neighborhood or those kind of things. And then we made infrastructure improvements later over time. Maybe we tried to bypass it or have the ability to bypass it, but didn't have the money at that point to connect it or to fix that. So partly the reason we have 25 or 26 lift stations in this town is because Rowland, like many communities, was annexed over time in a hodgepodge fashion. Not to say that it wasn't, you know, calculated and thought out, but the desire was to incorporate the entire, the entire area. What I always call the lungs of Rowland because if you look at it, it looks like a set of lungs. And, and so in making those conscious decisions at that time also meant that some of the infrastructure was put in at a time when we did not put in generators. Some of the more recent ones we do, but there's still a thirteen we don't. So only about half of our lift stations have generators. And I would bet you that most of those are your, the ones that have been built much more recently. A good question, sir. So as the mayor had identified, we, we have money here. And let's get back to this. So we have money in CARES. We still have the 1.2 we're preserving for, for future land acquisition. We have, we still have about a half million dollars, about $480,000, I think, out of the bucket that we discussed in January that we chose not to allocate at that time. And then we have about a half million dollars in surplus out of this year's money that we've also identified. So that gives us a lot of one-time choices. It doesn't necessarily fix all the ongoing costs that we might have. But we, like every year, there, we have resources. Even in a tight year, we're not getting much money this year in the general fund. Or at least not additionally, we didn't think, from the property tax, sales taxes we owe. And some of the decisions we make will also benefit the general fund. But that's, that's kind of where we're at. So what I would like to do is have a conversation with you at this point about, you know, where are some of the priorities that you see? I mean, I would hope that you will agree on the generators. I would love to set aside the money to abandon those two lift stations because we're gonna end up paying for that somewhere in, in the next couple of years. And most likely it will be out of our operating funds, our, our capital maintenance dollars. And we would rather not have to use that if we didn't have to. You wouldn't really want a bond, a 20-year bond to abandon. That's what I'm saying. So that's cash. And that frees cash up to do other things that we need to do in the utility fund.
Why can't you just keep those there indefinitely? That's a million dollars for a lift station to take down.
There, there is, there is work that they have to do to close it down. They, they, and I, and I can't even explain all the things that they do. But it's not just turn it off.
I didn't say that.
Sorry.
I didn't say just turn it off. I'm saying they're operating today. It doesn't cost a million dollars a year to operate these. I'm not sure why we would want to spend a million dollars times two or close to it to shut them down.
Part, part of the issue is the design of the Bayside Lift Station. They were designed in place to be able to eliminate those stations. So it's an efficiency issue. It saves money by not having to, to operate those three lift stations. And it was designed specifically to be able to do that.
Again, I get all that. But it's almost $2 million to shut it down and we can continue operating them less efficiently and not spend $2 million on shutting something down.
So, so what you're really asking is what's the ROI on it?
Yeah.
And the rate of return? So the rate of return might be 10 years, 12 years, 15 years in terms of the cost of running it versus spending a million dollars and now a $2 million down?
I don't know how to make that decision without additional information on those lift stations.
All right.
I understand how to make a decision on generation, generators for lift stations, but shutting them down for that kind of money, I don't have enough information.
Can we talk a little bit, because you all, you all put some lists together that were specifically related to ARPA funds, ARPA restrictions. Can we talk a little bit about other things that might be on the list that we could use the unrestricted funds for? Just so that we're not just focusing on the list that's provided, but we have. Like for instance, I wrote down two names. And there's probably a million more. Funding the golf fund could come out of these unrestricted CARES funds. You know, increasing our facilities reserves, if you will, from a million two to some of this money. So there's, those are just two things I just wrote down real quickly that you could use the ARPA funds for, but you could use some of this unrestricted CARES funds for. Is that, can we do that for a few minutes or would you all rather not do that? Well, I don't know.
I think, I think it's a good question because we need to understand what money can be spent on what and where, what buckets.
This is unrestricted.
Right. It's unrestricted.
Unrestricted one time. Unrestricted one time.
Unrestricted one-time money. But you know, building up a golf fund reserve is one-time, one-time money. You know, you build it up, you put it enough for the next three years. You've reduced your need to take that out of operating cash, you know.
Well, I have a question like the chief was talking about. They've been using the money to pay for their software out of, go back to my notes. Can that be taken out of ARPA funds?
Not ARPA, but unrestricted CARES, yes.
He's been using the seizure funds.
Yeah.
And did I take you off course, Brian? Do you want to do it a different way?
No, Mayor, that's fine. And that's, I was, I was going today to kind of do a recap. And letting you gather perfectly, but to recap for you to have all the resources that are available to you before we start making, giving final guidance. Now understand, you're not today, and I wouldn't even ask for this of you, but you're not, you're not here to say, well, I want that department to have that pickup or I want that position to be hired. But I think it's more strategy level guidance as we kind of get into the final 30, 40 days. So as the, can I capture all of this yet? So it's 6.8, it's the 1.5 here. It's the one-time in January, the $480,000. And it's the surplus, we tell.
That, 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 uh, half million, the one-time January is rolled into the CARES funding. It's all one pot. Yes. Yes, all of that is accounted for in that note.
Oh, are you sure?
Are you questioning?
Are you funny?
And I am double checking and I will correct myself if I'm wrong, but.
Well, Mayor, how you also moved in our employee wellness money and then we had.
Yes, but that, I netted everything together and the balance was rolled in. We acted as if we spent the employee health benefits fund first. What was left over was CARES money that we had transferred to the general fund. And that net is rolled in to what's left here.
Okay, that's good, that's fair. And then we, and just as, oh, a little point to the 1.2 for them.
That, that's what I was just gonna talk about. My, I would not, just personally would not like to lump the land acquisition 1.2 into money that could be looked at for spending at one time because we don't know what's gonna happen as Northside develops and, and other land that we don't acquire or own within the city. And if we don't do some type of park, this goes back to my strategic plan. We don't do some type of park dedication or park ordinance where we, there might be some land in there that we want to purchase from the developer so that we maintain public space and park space as we continue to grow because we don't have anywhere else to go. And so my recommendation is that we don't consider the land acquisition money at this point and kind of hold that until we have a better plan for what's gonna happen from north shore. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, and we may need to use it for an incentive, not just park. But the reason I brought it up is it is another bucket that's out there. And we may want to add to it for some of this CARES money.
That makes sense. I don't think how it's being put up there is it's money that we might want to use as a one-time fund and I would be against that.
Yeah, I was just trying to say as far as the generators go, I am definitely in favor of funding that. We're short-staffed in public works anyway. And they talk about how hard the work is, the burnout. Excuse me. And when those generators are needed, it is probably under the worst conditions that those guys can possibly work in. And so I just, I, I feel like we owe it to them and to those workers to give them the tools that they need without them having to haul it from one lift station to another. It's just burdensome and I really feel like we need to provide those generators.
Well, Mark, I appreciate that. It's a good point because it is absolutely usually nearly the worst, you know, weather condition, worst conditions. They, they're doing that when they can be out there walking off streets and addressing other issues. You gotta have a team, people who are dedicated, nothing but that.
And also that's a hazardous waste field just waiting to happen.
Yes, it is. Yeah, good point, Ronnie. Ronnie has made it the point that, you know, if we fail at this, you know, it could result in a sewer spill into the lake or wherever. And then that requires EPA notification, requires cleanup. So there's other expenses that, that can end up happening if we had a major spill.
Whole bunch of news campaigns.
So, so looking at the staff suggestions for the ARPA funds. The, obviously the generators, like we're all saying, the waterline movement, I think, is very critical. So it's a, most of our projects are dead end waterlines. It improves drinking water quality and resiliency of our operating system. Also, what that does is we don't have to flush hydrants all across the city. And it helps us in a ISO rating where we commit a being a class one ISO rating and reduce that, in turn reduce commercial insurance rates, which also means our community more economically, I guess, attractive. So I'd say waterline movement, for me, is also one of those top priorities.
On this list of sewer and water for ARPA, I'm curious which of these are in the plans for future. I'm curious which of these are in the plans for future capital projects in the normal course of our business with issuing, you know, special utility bonds? And which are above and beyond that plan?
We, we've got that, Mayor. We'll pull it up here in a minute. I know, I know you all have been working with Gary on that, so let's see. Did you pull it up, or what's the best way to do it?
I'm not sure that it's stretching. I have my budget book to show like what was, what has been. What is the microbudgeting for the future, like for other?
My question is, some of this is already planned in the short-term, medium-term, and long-term plan. And I think we're, how much in bonds are we proposing every year for water and sewer?
Seven.
Seven. So, you know, our water and sewer fund is in good shape. We're funding it where we need to be. We, we have that debt service capability in the future. So I don't want to double dip here.
Well, we need to, we need to be careful not to supplant it. We already have a plan in the PIB, but we can't, you know, that's a plan.
That's a big word.
So is that something that he might be able to answer, he might be able to answer? If it's a project that we've already identified in the funding plan, are we still allowed to come back and use these ARPA funds to pay for a project that I identified?
Supplant it.
So water and sewer is a little easier. Does water and sewer blocking the due bonds at that point, you don't have to set them in?
Um, the identified project list that we have. You know, saying, because we have a plan in paper, it comes as much on the list. That doesn't make it to where we can't fund that through ARPA funds.
Okay, so, okay, good point. So, so here's the, let's say we issue the $7 million for 12 projects this year. And then if we identify one of those that we want to use out of this money, then we could end up using the bond money for a water and sewer project.
That's one of the questions.
Yeah, no, my, so my question is, and the list that we have that has identified projects. Forget, I guess, forget the bond, forget that the bond's been, the list of identified projects. And we have a funding plan attached to that. Our funding plan is basically, it can be through the general fund or it can be through funding and through bond options. But that, that plan exists. Would it, would we still be able to come back and pay for one of those items through ARPA funds?
Oh, yes, okay. So your question is, the mere fact that it's identified as a part, as a five-year plan, or even if it's adopted budget, would we be able to use the ARPA funds to do that? The answer is yes.
Okay.
Now, I know the reason you're asking, that there are funds that we have from time to time that will not allow with the cost of plan, so, seizure fund.
Yes.
So, but no, we don't have that restriction to work on. So, and, and remember too, even in a five-year plan, we adopt the first five years as a budget. The other years are really just planned years. So we can definitely move that around. All right. So, um, so is it, I think it's the backup power, isn't it?
Just so you know, we can't read that from all here.
Can we increase the, the size of it?
I don't think you need to. What I'm asking is, on this list, on this ARPA list of sewer and water, which of these projects already has a plan for funding? You can just tell us.
College Park Lift Station was that one?
Two, yeah.
Yes.
So College Park is one.
Dalrock, do it up.
Which is the other one?
Uh, the.
So everything's on there?
Very much.
A bunch of it.
Yeah.
There was also a sewer line.
Water main looping.
Line 11.
So it looks like Gary pretty much took what was on the top of his list that he would want to add sewer and put it on here so that he?
And, and I, and I understand having the same list. I just, we've got to think big picture strategically here, because we've already made decisions on how to fund water and sewer infrastructure, and we have a very good plan. Now, if something has come up higher in a priority, like generators for lift stations maybe.
Right.
But I don't, I'm not so sure we would supplant the plan.
Right, totally.
But you're also, you're, you're also, I guess, allocating funding to these top priorities. You're allowing more investment through the plan that we have for other purposes.
For water and sewer projects?
Right.
Which are a specific fund coming from specific revenue sources. Some of these other suggestions for ARPA funds are not restricted to water and sewer funds.
Right.
So you gotta be careful with that. There's not another funding source for these non-water and sewer funded projects. But there is a funding source for these sewer and water projects.
And so that's where I need to understand a little bit better the ARPA funds. And I understand there's some restrictions. Is there other stuff that's outside of the utility sewer and water? And the broadband that we can spend ARPA funds on? I don't understand that enough about what else is out there, what else we can spend on.
It's one of those reasons.
These are, these are, I guess, I guess, okay, so one reason you're not seeing streets now is you can't do that. There are other, there are other projects that, you know, I can't hire social media as a person out of none of these funds. So what we're, what we've tried to do is identify programs that we thought were qualified in the system that we also knew were super important. Had they had different restrictions, then you might be seeing a different list. So I can't hire police officers with it. I can't, can't buy a fire truck out of it. You know, those are things I cannot do that we were having active conversations this weekend about.
Is it a, is it an approach, I'm asking, sincerely asking, is it an approach to potentially fund these other items? Not necessarily first from a, it happens first, but from a allocation, if you will. You know, it's, it's a million dollars for utilities, broadband, and it's 780,000 for other. Now, we can go through each one. But then we still have millions of dollars of ARPA funds to kick off, to knock off some of these sewer and water projects that accelerate some of our capital improvements in that system, but don't also, you know, take away all that funding source that we've already identified.
So to the Mayor's point, and that, that's really where I was gonna come with it, and Laura and I kind of talked about, is that if we're able to knock off some of these others, he's able to accelerate his plan, we're not proposing, even with this money, we're not proposing to, to change the funding cycle at this point. We, we have reached a, a level, Nirvana, by, by annually funding a certain amount and with a strategy of increasing that funding by 10% per year. So in our mind, if we're able to knock off some of the more critical items, all that's gonna do is be able to accelerate some of the other programs or projects that we can't get to yet.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying, from a priority standpoint, again, not when you do the project, but prioritizing the money, use the ARPA funds for these other two things and then a couple of select sewer and water projects. And then you're kind of accomplishing both goals.
Can I add something on that? Looking at that, I'd already done that allocation to see if we spent, if we did broadband first. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I looked at it, and if we go with that approach, do a broadband administrative, and then the other item, that's 26% of the funding. And then it leaves you about $5 million, which is 74% of the funding, left to allocate to water sewer projects.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Um, there, there's quite a bit of discrepancy between the cost there that's on the screen and then what's here on the sheets.
This is last year, this is the adopted budget, so this would have been last summer.
Wait, no, no, no. That is, that, see, this starts in fiscal year '22. This is what is gonna be proposed for this current budget and the next five years.
I'm not sure you pulled this through half the books.
No, because.
We did originally, but then we found.
Because each year, each year we have to reevaluate, each year, what's going on with the system and may have to shift projects around. So this is where it landed this year that's gonna be proposed for the projects in this coming proposed.
So, so in essence, which one's the more accurate number? Is it this?
But, but what they're saying is the discrepancy in between the cost that Gary listed here versus the cost there. I don't know if it has to do with him saying the full project within this scope versus maybe that is, uh?
We, we have, we have the, the kids here, and I'm just making sure everybody can hear.
For example, the College Park Lift Station is only half a million there, and it's 877,000 on the ARPA sheet. So the price went up by $300,000.
Is it phasing it in?
If we do it now, if we just left it alone, it'd be $500,000.
I don't think that's how that's supposed to work. Something's wrong.
So I, but it didn't like the water line looping, you've only got $2 million on here, but the total price of theirs.
Right, because in part, you'd be spreading that out over years.
So we're only talking about partial.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Wait.
You hear what I'm saying? See, the water line is 3.4, and the total.
We can get him on the phone, but I don't know how much it's gonna help.
Exactly. So that's why, I, you know, for the society, what we're gonna put in these buckets, which numbers are we using to put in buckets? Because I confuse which one's right.
Well, I think finance, I think, did that list.
Well, no, we worked with CIP, we've worked with Public Works to do that list. He just may have, what's in this with the ARPA funds may be more enhanced project. Like, this is the minimum, this could be the minimum to get by, because this is how the city is funding it. Whereas maybe it could be a better project if we have ARPA funds to fund it. But I will call him and find out, like specifically, like the water looping. And also, you said the College Park. I'll ask him, like, what's the difference in the price between what we put in the five-year plan versus what the ARPA funding?
I, I was just gonna say, we're not gonna solve that either. But do you all like that approach?
You say that.
Okay, so for ARPA funds, make sure we fund what we want to fund. We can talk through it on this broadband page and this other uses page. Go through those items, and then see how much that adds up to-ish. And then look at the water and sewer fa, uh, page and say, we could still fund the generators with ARPA funds. And we can still generate, uh, fu, uh, fund the looping. And that's our approach we want to take.
That, yeah, I think that's a good approach, because I think when I did the math, it was about 3.3 million that would be left over. We funded everything on the other uses and?
Broadband.
Broadband, about 3.3, just in the ARPA funds. My only, and then as we get into the utility funds, one thing to think about, I would recommend, is that we, since we have to 2024, do extend those.
Yeah.
Is that we keep a percentage of it aside in case we, so if we have a big water line or sewer line break that we weren't expecting, like we've had in a couple of years, if, you know, 3, 4, 500, $500,000 to fix, would we be able to use that if we had some reverse to be able to fund that fix?
Yeah, so, so we have until the end of calendar year '24 to spend the money. Right? So, so, or kind of by then. And so, um, if, so we obviously would not necessarily spend all $6.8 million in the next few months anyway, because we don't even have half of it yet. But, um, but if some of it has to be engineered and designed for we can even start construction, then that puts us off. And that's one of the reasons why they knew, they knew that with the CARES money, there was such an intensity of having to spend it before the end of last calendar year. A lot of organizations had trouble doing that. Whereas with this, they, they kind of extended that out and gave us basically three years. So yes, if we identified something now and it still took us a couple of years before we finish the project, that's okay.
Or we could set some aside if we had for emergency repairs.
Um, I, I would, I would hazard a guess on the emergency repairs, maybe not, because it's supposed to be investments in instead of repairs. But we have some money set aside. If you remember back in January, we had some leftover utility money, and council at that point wanted to set some of that, those dollars aside for emergencies in the future.
Okay. Well, that, that answers that.
Yeah, the, the list that was up there before, the first one I was, there was the 66 water main. And that one's been, that one has been new. It's costing us the most with emergency funding over the last year. I think there was like three different rates in the system there, so that's, you know, that's probably gonna be funded through the, uh, bonds anyway that we have. So, um, so are we gonna select here?
Well, I, I, I like the Mayor's approach. This is more about strategy. So, uh, and the one thing, to go to the last slide, Lauren might be the second to the last, but I'm in charge of it. At this point. So, so really, what we were, what we were trying to say, you'll remember a similar format we used for the CARES money. How much do we want to allocate for health businesses and individuals? How much we need for our own expenses? How much do we set aside for in case COVID got worse? You remember that mantra that we had? So it was the same thing here. How much do we want to allocate for administration? How much do we want to allocate for other purposes? How much for broadband? This is the Mayor's approach that she was mentioning, um, in terms of the larger buckets. Now, you know, yes, I, I would love for you to say specifically that, Brian, the generators are number one on our list, and we need to make that happen. And that, that's enough specificity that I want to tell Gary to start making it happen even now. But some of the other stuff really is just, you know, what other things would you want to do? You've seen staff's list, but are you, and we know we have some CARES money left. You know, do we want to use any of these funds for those other things that we, we did during the CARES, with the CARES money? Or are we focused just on these things? I just don't want you to lose an opportunity if there's one thing you need. Like, do we want to do more robust funding? You know, that kind of stuff.
All right, let's, let's stick with ARPA for a minute. Let's look at the broadband page. Does anybody have any concerns about anything on the broadband, broadband page?
Sapphire Bay, I want to talk.
I agree with that.
Can you explain that one a little bit more? When is that needed?
So, um, you know, kind of going back to the whole, the fires, sorry.
Did you hear the, um, the question about the fiber cell effect? When is that needed, or is that a certain, that's fire and grease, so we wouldn't need that? Is that engineering? Is that actually running the fiber? Can you just talk through that?
So I don't, I don't have the map up there, but as you guys know, the way that our, our fiber ring works is that we have connectivity to the new fire station number two. So there is, there are two connections from there to go down Chiza or to go down Dalrock. And each one has a cost associated with it. What he, what we're trying to do is to have our broadband in there by the time that fire station number five will be open, so connected. Because that's, that's our facility. We're not running broadband down there for Sapphire Bay, for the resort and all those things. We're running it down there for our purposes. And so, you know, he, he would like to have this done within the next two years.
Well, I, as we talked about yesterday, there's more, in my opinion, there's more discussion to have there and would take that $100,000 off right now.
Unless, well, unless we're already doing a fiber project in the city and get a lot of comments.
I, I, I personally recommend leaving it there, because I think either way, we're gonna have to have fiber down there anyway. And it's better to use it through these funds instead of general fund or tax or dollars.
Well, there's an outdoor wind turbine down there too that.
And I think it's a big fiber project and all these things. I would leave it in there. I hear the map, but I would personally leave it in there.
I'm leaving it in there.
I am, so, same.
Yeah, well, and, and I was gonna say, you know, there may be some economies of scale that you can tap into if there's other utilities that are, I, I don't know if we have to tunnel or bury that fiber cable or not, but you gotta get it across I-30.
Well, it is already, then, when they, when they design the, let's call it the tunnels under I-30 for water and sewer and all that, broadband was part of what they did, those kind of utilities. So it's, so the conduit. So it's, so the conduit is there, but we still have to run it from one location down there. The running of it is, uh, is what's gonna cost us almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Why do we need fiber to, uh, Community Park?
I'm telling you, so you currently, you currently have staff at Community Park, our entire Parks Division houses out there and likely will for a while. And they run all of their operations off of a Wi-Fi.
Oh, what?
A Wi-Fi.
Oh, no.
Because there is no fiber to Community Park. Now, we will have to be part of that anyway, as part of the outdoor warning siren and the fiber connections is a part of that, so that will help us. But they run their entire system, their network, off of individual Wi-Fi devices because they don't have service, they don't have fiber networks in that department.
Is that like a hotspot?
I don't know, yes. So we have, we have four permanent offices and thirteen staff, fire station.
Interesting, okay, sorry.
I would agree with that.
Does anybody have any other broadband issues, concerns, questions? What about the other list? I personally am not so prepared to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a neighborhood empowerment program without knowing the heck of a lot more. But, um, and we got, we've got SER, we've got all kinds of stuff, but.
I wonder, I should have asked this before, wonder if they have any dean that's supporting hotspots.
I'm sorry, what you have in mind?
I should have asked. More before, from the library, if they had any dean that's in support and need for those hotspots. Because the social system is already doing that with all of their kids. They've got a big program for that to address the gap there. So I'm wondering what, um, population they're trying to sort of with those hotspots.
It's not the kids, I, I don't think it's the kids.
I believe it is adults and seniors.
It's not a big ticket item.
It's not, I'm just wondering.
But opportunity is, if we go through this, if through our operating budget and those limitations, it won't make the list. So if we have the opportunity to do it here, it might, it might make the list.
So, um, I'm not personally saying I don't support the neighborhood empowerment program, but I don't think it's allocable dollars at this point in time without loaning the heck of a lot more, but.
You leave that one?
I would say leave it on, it's had something to do with disasters. Could you explain that one?
Yeah, I.
I think generally, in a very general level, it's a residency program, right? So it's the idea that once you are operating, um, subject to the disaster, you're trying to make sure that the people within that neighborhood are able to bounce back in short period of time. So to give you an example, um, when I was in New Orleans, I ran a similar type of program. One of the things we have is, uh, points of distribution with medicine. So you may have a hog service set up that, uh, you've gone door to door asking, uh, maybe some of your elderly, some of your children with medicines. Do you need something where it happened, a disaster happens? Or you've already got a certain amount of, you know, in accordance with FEMA guidelines, certain amount of access built in that you can bring those resources in quickly. Same for like food pantries, things like that.
I don't know if you're familiar with our COAD, but that is the role of our COAD.
So it's a personal program.
Insert.
Yeah, and, and those are very much, um, uh, aspects of that type of program. That's why I said on a very general level, what she's asking for is money set aside. And the reason I think that's put in there is if you go to the enabling legislation here, it said everything that you do should be able to tie into COVID. Or being able to build your residency to, you know, disaster type situations in the future, right? So I think the idea is you know that you have a population that is impacted and some areas are gonna come back slower than others. And the legislation actually says that the way Congress will, uh, kind of look at and review these things for eligible costs. They're being a lot more liberal in their interpretations when you're taking inequity and inclusion, so I think that was trying to.
Then I would, uh, support that a hundred percent and whatever dollar amount is appropriate if that's, uh, to fund the COAD for future emergencies. I, I don't wanna set up a whole new program, we already have SER, we already have COAD. Um, if it's funding to existing programs and make our existing programs more robust, I think that's the direction to go, not create a new program.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree with that, and I think also allocating between the COAD and SER. Um, because that's, again, that's both of their missions is, is that exactly disaster preparedness.
I think that's a good point, it's no different really than the money we set aside for golf maintenance for projects out there, setting aside money here for future. And maybe education, it could be just, you know, preparation, short gap weaknesses out there, you know, that would help support our communities if there was a disaster, so.
Yeah.
I think that's a really good point, right?
And also purchasing some equipment to help in those disaster situations.
But then, okay.
So, how about? So is everybody okay with the rest, the other use, other uses list?
Yeah.
All right, so does that leave us enough to cover a couple of immediate priorities that we've uncovered for water and sewer?
Looked like it's one point eight for those two pages, broadband and, uh, exit, one point eight, so you got?
So three point three would be left.
Should we allocate or give guidance to allocate for the half of the money that we have now? And then have another session where we get the other half next year, because we don't have the full of six point eight now.
I, I personally would like to make big decisions and then make a littler decision of what's first, but those decisions can change in the future.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But I think we should think about the entire amount, right? The whole amount.
Well, and, and one point, like on even the generators, um, it's still, you know, in my mind, what we would do is we would go out for a bid to get them all. But it's still gonna take a year and a half to, to actually get them all installed, you know, because even if you did one contract, you're still gonna end up doing, you're not gonna build all thirteen at one time.
So, um, we wanna go like, so generators for lift stations, obvious. Like I said, for water line looping, but that's, you know, up to the council, that's another part of the.
Actually, we have five million, where, what's the three point eight?
Oh, uh, we, uh.
So with the generators, the other list, broadband, we would have three point eight left.
Okay, I'm just starting with six point eight two.
Okay.
Minus one point, yes. Six eight two oh minus, hang on, six eight two oh minus one oh one eight. Minus seven eighty-eight gives us five million.
Right, so it's to go after the utilities.
Right, and the question is, does that give us enough and are we still okay with the macro approach? If funds.
Yeah, as long as there's no other, other uses or broadband that we need to consider.
If it funded generators and water line looping, we still have another million too.
Yeah.
Maybe you can get one of those lift stations offline, maybe.
You sound like caution.
I'd also take a look at the sixty-six, um, main, since we're continuing to have those failures and it's costing us a heck of a lot.
So, uh, they are working on it right now, so Gary is putting together a plan for all of the highway sixty-six sewer situation from McDonald's.
So just a plan, a lot of funding?
No, it is a funding deployment, so from McDonald's all the way down, down the lake and up Chisa, around that way and all the way up to the edge of the park.
And is that on this list or his, I mean?
I think it's been some parts of that and how it will hit down. They have funding right now to work on the one that goes along the lake and up sixty-six and Chisa and that area and then the next section, so.
We could save that million two for the next big project.
That would pay for a.
The challenge to is getting aware that they have like issues, so they're gonna turn into an emergency.
Yeah, cause it's a cast iron, it's, it's so, um, those, sorry.
So Mary, can I, can I visit that just a moment, I was just here.
I'm gonna, yeah, sure.
Help you with that, so we have the generators, the other list, the broadband, um, and then the looping project, I think you'd like, wasn't that two million even?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, back here.
And then the generators are, I think, one point eight.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry about that, one point eight, so that's three point two, that leaves it with one point two. That, that's what it is, thank you.
Let's pause for a minute, what do you all think, Tom, so we can pass the microphone along, what do you wanna change, what do you like or not?
I like that.
I'm fine with that too. I agree.
I guess we could just count thumbs up and thumbs down.
I like preserving the one point two for a future project. Preserving the one point two.
Are we gonna go to the first list station and have ribbon cutting for the generator?
What did you say?
Go, go to the first, uh, generator installed and have ribbon cutting at the, at the lift station.
So, so that, so you want your tape one time to us.
Can you pass the microphone now?
Who's naming them to put on that list? I got a couple.
Did you, did you like, ask me a question?
No, that's why, I was like, I just wanted to have the microphone. Um, no, this is just discovery, discussing, that's not you.
This is just our brand.
Ladies and gentlemen, is that what, what are we doing?
I should have asked Gary this yesterday, how are we on fuel tankers? Like, how, how does he fuel the, the generators currently and does he have a need there to do that?
Yeah, they're actually, they have one, um, I think that, uh, but they, that was one thing that was originally on the list. I don't think he discussed it yesterday in traffic order, that's one of them, oh, actually, I may know something.
Um, I, I, I saw that on the enterprise replacement plan to replace that truck with a new fuel truck.
That, that's what it is, that's why it's embedded in that, that's why.
Do you know how many gallons it was?
See, here's the thing, some of these generators are natural gas powered and some are diesel powered. I don't know how many of those are natural and how many of those are diesel, but I don't know the size.
There are enough of them out there that are diesel, um, but where we have access, we can use natural gas if we can.
I just wanna make sure we have a big enough fuel tank that they're not running back and forth in an emergency situation, I mean, they're big enough to. They can fill up, hit them all, play, go back and refill up and, um, if that's a piece of equipment, I mean, that's, it might fall under any of this that we need, help with that.
It, it's a Ford F three fifty diesel truck with a small tank on it, that gives you a bit.
Like a hundred gallons.
Yeah, to me, that's, that's not enough, you need like a five or a gallon, you know, you need like a dump truck.
A mini tank.
Like a dump tanker on it, that you can get around all of those, you're not having to go back and forth from.
Where did you get that answer?
I think it was a tank on the diesel generator.
Uh, it varies, depends on the, the age.
I mean, the, the tank for the, uh, he could, you'll see it's like, like, I mean, it's massive, a couple thousand gallons. Now it's more than that.
All right, we'll get an answer for that one.
I need to, can we?
Yes, somebody.
Then we'll go back to the CARES thing, I'm sorry.
No, I have the right answer, so let's give the food, um, so take a few minutes, get your, get your nails, uh, and then during the time, we'll do the legislative update, um.
Okay.
We back on?
We're back on, we're back live. So for your entertainment very much, I have the way to cover legislative issues. Um, great news, this year, there wasn't a significant number of bills passed, not passed vetoed, that affected the way we as a city government operate. So what we're gonna do today is kinda talk about just the highlights, some of the things that we're gonna look at over the next several months, how make those, those things happen. Um, eighty-seventh legislature by the numbers, there were six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven bills introduced or filed. Of that, one thousand and seventy-one bills passed. Uh, in the eighty-sixth legislature, just as reference, fourteen hundred and twenty-nine bills passed. Uh, as you know, they had a lot of conversations and, and some a little bit of drama going on up there this time, so, um, there are potential sessions to come. I saw yesterday that they had called a summer session on July eighth. Um, and then they likely will also have a fall session. So in summer, they predict they will talk about election integrity, bail reform, and anything else they didn't wrap up from the last session. Um, in the fall, they will come back again to discuss redistricting and their sixteen billion dollars worth of ARPA funds. So still more to come on some of those topics. Um, there were a lot of those that were gonna make the cut, and I'll just kinda cover these in broad topics, um, copy this off T M L's lap, and it's funny, he's laughing at me. So community censorship, sales tax sourcing, partisan city elections, that was one of the topics that require city elections to. Put by the party they go within, um, preemption of city regulations and state licenses, expansion of video conferencing and teleconferencing. Land development shop clock expansion, uh, that is one that we all was very worried about and did watch very closely. Uh, because it would alter how they do business over in community development. E T J removal, mandatory sick leave, chickens, rabbits and bees, they talked quite a bit about hormones. Um, omnibus disaster authority during epidemic, um, extension of chapter three thirteen incentives, preemption of city employment regulations. And expanded liability for the ballot coverage.
I'm sorry, does anybody know what E T J one, what's the gist of that one was? What was that?
They wanna get rid of them.
Like completely? So if you had E T J, it was just gonna automatically become part of city boundaries?
They wanna take away, no, they want, they wanna take away local patrol.
Yeah.
So cities won't be able to, to do anything with E T Js.
You can't charge.
And what they need to say, they can talk specifically about is pup charging if you live in the E T J. So if you, um, live within the city around that E T J, not only would you be billed for your ambulance services that you got as a medical service. But you could also be billed for our services to come to your house and provide the public safety services that are typically required. So, um, what were cities worried about that didn't pass, um, in their original format? So there was a lot of changes during the legislature. There was a community censorship bill that would have prevented cities from hiring advocates or joining associations that advocate for their citizens to be capital.
Does that, does that get a special section, session? I know that the lieutenant governor wanted it to.
They're probably.
I don't think so.
It's not on the list.
It's not on the list, yeah.
Not yet.
And the list is in process, so I think they must have just called the session in the last couple of days because I saw it yesterday, so.
Yeah, they did.
I'm not sure what else is gonna end up coming back. Um, debt bill that in its early form would have prevented the issuance of most C O's for infrastructure projects. By requiring that they're paid from, from maintenance operations side of the property tax rate. A bill that would have harmfully expanded the application of the calendar, calendar shop clocks and the building permitting and land developing fields. A super preemption bill that would have prevented many city regulations from applying to any state license holder. Um, legislation that required sick and injury leave for first responders that was duplicative of already existing workers' compensation laws. And a bill that would have prevented cities from regulating backyard agricultural practices, so bunnies, eggs, chickens. So, um, it would have definitely had an impact on our community development department, our good enforcement department. Some of it did pass, oh, I guess that's a click thing, sorry. I get sidetracked and forgets to click the button. I get sidetracked and forgets to click the button. So some of it did pass that are community development related, um, S B eight seventy seven building inspections. Um, this modifies city building inspection requirements during declared disasters. It basically does not require our building official or our team to go out and do inspections. Um, it is effective immediately. It may require a change in our fees, but it will let someone hire an outside building official to come in and do their inspection during, during a disaster. Uh, order adjustment, it outlines consistency when V O A is granting zoning variances in hardship situations. Our community development team and our V O A will now need to specifically outline what those hardships are. Um, and what they, how that will affect how they grant variances. And then unlawful restraint of a dog, um, this made it all the way through and then got beaten up by the governor. Um, it basically outlined a more humane standard of care for dogs as well as enforcement mechanisms for that. Farmer's market, it changes how we charge fees for farmer's market. Uh, the city runs our farmer's market, so we don't charge our participants a inspection or a health permit fee. This sets up a system where your fee can exceed a hundred dollars for an entire year for every farmer's market type of day that you're sitting. So if they need those restrictions to be a farmer's market vendor, then it's one flat fee and they're permitted for the whole year. Um, it went into effect June the fourteenth, um, and they will reallocate their fee schedule to make sure that those vendors aren't charged. Food establishment, it allows a restaurant to sell unprepared food directly to an individual. Um, it will increase inspection time. It went into effect June fourth, and there's no state licenses required, um, if you want to do that. And basically that is a restaurant being able to prepare to go meals and cook it up. Um, so we have several in town that, we have several businesses in town that do that. This will allow all restaurants to do that now. Police department, body worn cameras, hospital nine twenty nine, uh, related directly to law enforcement policies and procedures regarding body worn cameras. It will become effective September first and basically states that a peace officer has to keep their body camera activated from the beginning to the end of the interaction. Um, it can only go off in the sense that the body camera failed, so they can't at any point turn off their body camera. Um, unless and stand and carry as many of you know, hospital nineteen twenty seven authorized anyone over the age of twenty one years of age and not otherwise prohibited by law, um, for possessing a firearm to carry a firearm. That goes into effect September the first. Um, we talked to Michael Godfrey, Chief Godfrey about it, and he said it's really an education process with his officers now to make sure they understand anybody can carry it anytime. Um, the state, I mean, I know one of the questions you could ask is about an online class or a training class for those folks. The state is working through that, and I think the Department of Public Safety is in the process of developing an online class that can take. They'll teach you about safety of weapons.
Not shall, okay.
Can, absolutely. You don't have to. Uh, peer support, this is a big one for our police department, S B sixty four. It instructs that the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, T C O's, will have to create a peer support system for law enforcement agencies across the state. And that's effective immediately. There's only a few more.
What does that mean?
So basically, they will set up a system that is peer support. So in an emergency, they may have an emergency team that comes out. Um, this is a support system across the state for different officers.
Mental health.
Chuck, you have a critical point.
You're saying physical health.
Okay, so it's not a buddy system.
It's all.
It's a program.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it.
And they, they are still working on that. So a lot of the stuff, it's either got into effect immediately or it's about to go in fact and it will wait on guidelines from T N A and from D P S and from T C O's and all the different folks that are involved, so. Paid quarantine leave, uh, basically requires the city of Rallett to pay quarantine leave for firefighters, peace officers, detention officers, and emergency medical technicians or paramedics in our case. Um, if they are, uh, if they acquire COVID nineteen specific, the bill is kind of specifically written to that, this one. Um, they are not required to use their personal annual leave to do that. So as you know, during the pandemic, um, one of the requirements was that, or stations give their employees work up to fourteen days. This carries that forward and says that we will continue to pay them. Um, there will be a financial effect to the city, and Richard is in the process of, we will have to also rerun our policies to address this issue.
Yeah, but it's specific to government. It's not to private industry.
Right. Uh, disease presumption. So in the case that a detention officer, custodial officer, firefighter, peace officer, E M T paramedic is proven to have a virus or disease, in this case COVID nineteen, um, the government will assume that they were infected at work, um, and pay benefits as such if there is a death or a partial disability for any reason.
I'd be really curious to debate on that one, why they limited it to E M T peace officers, firefighters, and custodial officers? Because if you're a disaster, you're gonna have works, you're gonna have parks guy, you're gonna have.
Sir.
I mean.
It's because they don't understand local government at home.
They just like.
Hey man, brother.
They just like tell you what to do.
I would, I would policy wise, I would hope at least the city would extend that to all of our employees.
Matt, I think part, one thing, um, it, it may be why it was a focal element. Obviously during, during the pandemic, um, you know, they were obviously on the front lines, but there were other people on the front lines too, like adopters and nurses and other folks too. What I would, uh, say at the state, and I'm, I'm doing this for memory. I think there was a financial benefit that at least peace officers get if they kill in the line of duty, um, from the state, from the state benefit. And it makes me just wonder if that was the triggering point of why they focused just on, um, those other than just a political answer, which, you know, happens a lot of times.
So, so how long is this one in effect?
Forever. Twenty-two. It's a permanent change.
Um, because, I mean, COVID is gonna become a routine illness that's treated with over the camera meds. I, I, I don't get this.
It's, it's specific to any virus or disease, um, so it's how it.
Didn't I say that?
Right, for which there is a disaster declaration.
What?
It is any virus or disease for which there is a disaster declaration.
Okay.
They give, I heard that during the tournament.
But it's temporary for COVID because it's not a permanent.
I, I agree. It's a term of permanent law, but it's temporary because of COVID. Um, so this might be one area, and this is effective when? I mean, immediately. So this might be one area that we do wanna look at some of that ARPO funds and, because there is gonna be a cost to this and allocate some of that one point two million to this from those ARPO funds. Because I, I think we need to be really concerned that this is gonna affect our general fund budget.
Wasn't this one retroactive too? Back to March of last year?
So I'm gonna just give you a turn.
I think this was retro.
Even if it's, if it's retro, that's even more. I just, that's something that we can quantify, that we can use our ARPO funds for, that, um, I think we should consider.
Yep, absolutely.
Definitely take a look at it.
Brian, are you a conceptionary at least?
And then just a few more, uh, H B five twenty-five, and this went through several different renditions in deals specifically with religious organizations. And our inability when there is a disaster declaration to not have them conducting business and having services. So they are officially now an essential service going forward. Um, that was effective immediately. Public health disaster preparedness, um, this one may offer us some challenges in a, um, disaster declaration. It calls out that we have to check up on citizens that are considered medically fragile. Uh, it includes several steps, an automated phone call, a personal phone call, and an inadvertent sit and visit. If they don't respond at either of those two. Um, T N A will set up guidelines for that program and what it looks like, and then our Office of Emergency Management will carry that forward. Whether it's help from co-op or it's help from different groups and being able to use our nine one one reverse call system to help with this. And then just a fun one, golf carts. Um, now any master plan community and any road under the speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour, you can drive your golf cart on. So, um, I know I'm to make sure that our ordinances are aligned there, um, so that we don't have any issues, but an area like Water View, Matt can now purchase a, uh, purchase a golf cart and drive around the.
Each way we're actually, I'm sure using our, our one police force to pull people over, golf carts.
That's funny, is the cops with the golf cart, you're over at a line.
So we didn't go to the, Whitney, Blake and I all attended the T M L legislative update, given questions. They've been a huge resource for us to help. Like they have a few more looks like that he wants to talk about.
Yes, just a quick few more. Uh, that was a really good synopsis there. Um, so one of them I thought was pretty interesting. I wrote down several of these, but one of them, uh, S B fifteen five, historic landmark, cities can now designate property as a local historical landmark if property owner consents or if the planning and zoning commission, uh, approves it by three fourths vote. So an example, Cotton Gin, that would be the Coal House, we can designate that now as a local historical landmark. Um, so that's something I thought was pretty interesting that we can look into in the future. Um, the other thing that's notable is, uh, that schools no longer have the ability to do property tax abatements or incentives. That's.
Three thirteen.
Yes.
Similar to, uh, three eighty agreements.
Right.
For municipalities, but now school systems are no longer able to do that because their authorization.
I'm not sure they historically done.
Get the, get the deal. He just said, I hear you. Anyway, you wouldn't give him the money.
Um, they do, when they do bigger, uh, incentive projects that would come in from like headquarters stuff, then, because most of their tax bill is, is paid off from school taxes. So that is now gonna become a big disadvantage for the state by not re-upping. I would expect it to come up in next legislation to try to renew it.
There, there was a time when school districts in the state did more of those. But, uh, some years ago, there, there were, and I think it had to do with the School Funding Act at that time. There, there was some significant pushback on city, uh, school districts doing that. And I remember when I first got here, right about that time, there had been, um, there had been a request from the school district to participate in our tourist district, the one that included North Shore. And at that time, they refused on the grounds of the way the School Funding Act was, was set up. And so I think now, like Blake was saying, now they, they will be in town and choice.
Um, so another notable one is, it's, uh, it's now a misdemeanor to, uh, have any contact with the chief appraiser of the, uh, property tax appraisal district. So for elected official. By elected official.
By staff.
Oh, and I think staff constantly, but I'm a solo official. So can't do that. It's illegal. Um, S B seven forty-two, uh, businesses can now receive installment payments for property taxes if there is a, uh, a disaster and it has type physical damage, so.
So Blake, you may not know the answer to this, but, uh, as far as the Coal House being designated as a, um, historical building, if it's been moved, you know, that's been our problem, uh, all along, is that we were not able to get the state designation because it had been moved from its original location. Do you know if that applies at all to?
So it's part of what was discussed, there was no specifics as to what if, if that, if we have to also follow the state's guidelines for how they, uh, mark something as a historical landmark. Um, so being.
The opinion was that it still had to meet certain set of guidelines. We couldn't just go like, any building we wanted, historical. It still had to meet, but if the owner is in interest in doing it, now the city can. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Block of that policy.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, S B fourteen thirty-eight, it reveals existing law related to the calculation of the tax rate in a disaster area. Um, so basically, uh, there, we cannot issue property taxes on, uh, in homes that are physically damaged in a designated disaster area. Oh, another thing that they're gonna have to look at and, and implement with staff, um, is there our new, uh, uh, S B thirteen, S B nineteen, uh, as part of bids, when we do bids, you have to add into our bids that, um, the company that we're contracting with cannot at any point boycott, uh, the oil industry and cannot boycott firearms. So, uh.
What'd you say? Can most not want us?
All of them, all of them. Anything that's over a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. Anything that's over a hundred thousand, you can't boycott oil industry and you cannot boycott firearms. And you cannot, yeah. The other thing to listen to, the other thing is you cannot contract with a company that is in Iran, China, Russia, uh, basically adversary countries of the United States of America. So that's a new bill I'm just looking.
What'd you all say?
Um, there's a new program that you and I need to look into, uh, S B nine forty-one, scenic highways program. Uh, Tech Stop established, uh, is, is tasked with establishing a scenic highways program in which the city can apply for grants or federal funding, provided that, um, the highway is designated through a certain state law as prohibited from having commercial signage and may be designated as a scenic state requirement. So that may open up to more opportunities.
I'll look at S B, S B nine forty-one.
Uh, that's all I have. Have anything, Woody?
S B, er, I'm sorry, hospital H B, H B sixty-nine, redefine debt for debt financing. I don't know that it'll have a net versus fact, but there's a new definition of what you can consider debt for I, for I N S.
Yeah.
Um, that starts September first of this year.
That's the, uh, yeah, that's related to, uh, what we're allowed to, uh, fund through C O bonds. So can't, can't fund the city hall or a community center through C O bond, S B G.
There's specific items in here of what you can do.
There was a bill that I was carrying for a little while and I lost it about with, um, camping in public spaces.
That passed. It did. So now it's like, you mentioned, right, there's no camping in public and if, if you, the city wanted to have an area where that's allowed, you would have to designate that area as camping ground.
That was specifically the residence.
Yes.
And now, and now makes it classy if you are camping in public property. Again, it's just a classy.
I mean, it's, it's. Effective, um, in a few months, because they were giving Austin and Dallas some time to transition and have a policy initiated. Because if there was immediate, that would just be impossible to.
Yeah.
Because of the late, we have some pretty good camping, no camping ordinances in this.
We do.
It just gives, I mean, it just gives a little bit more teeth, you know, the D A's still have to process cases, they're gonna address the problem of let you go, but it, it at least lets you track a little bit better. It's a little bit more teeth than to being able to help with moving homeless.
Another important one, uh, is Senate Bill fourteen thirty-eight, which is redoes the, the tax rate calculation for disaster areas. So as we talked before, um, they repealed the existing law relating to the calculation of tax rate in a disaster, which means that when we chose, uh, to change the maximum tax rate at eight percent before the rollback last year, they, they've done away with that for any type of pandemic. So.
For the future. Doesn't change.
No, we're fine, uh, for what we had before, but that definitely.
That's the reason that you can't make these hot lists because it doesn't really affect us for the past.
But it's good to know.
Just, yeah, it's just something good to know.
So did they pass a budget?
Yes, they passed.
How much did they get this time?
SB 1 passed.
How much, how much percentage was it higher?
Probably over 8%.
Oh, sure.
I mean. Two years ago.
I guarantee it was way over 2%.
But the governor had like six priorities or nine priorities, do you remember? And the lieutenant governor had 31.
Oh my God.
Those are, those are.
And when they send these bills to committee for debate, it does not mean that you have people talking about them intelligently.
SB 84, is the tourism hit bill, which removes the required, the old requirement for the legislature to accrue the city before they have to do that. So now, City Council can do that on their own, as long as they meet three or four conditions. Kind of coming into health, so we'd be able to do that.
So we don't have to go back.
You don't have to.
That's good news.
That's really good.
So that's SB 84.
That makes so much sense.
So that would be good, because as soon as we have two hotels, then we can.
There you go.
Put that place. Camping, the camping was HB 1925. Oh, can't, no instructing in my way.
You want to share your offer?
One that will affect the budget a little bit is SB 790, which is the ambulance bill, balance billing. So you can't, you can't bill for a balance after insurance pays for it. Yeah, oh, that's going to affect us. So, we bill for ambulance services. If we bill the insurance company, we have to accept what the insurance company pays on it and not bill the customer for the balance.
I don't think we can do that anyway.
Well, we, we send them a payment, like you have to pay this, but we're never going to really.
I mean, I have to bill for various ambulance, but.
Well, it was really, it was really. It was really pointing toward air ambulance, because toward helicopter, because their bill is over $10,000. And insurance would come in only be a thousand for it, and then you're supposed to be on hook for thousands of dollars. But property in this could have fallen out.
I don't think we're probably doing that though, y'all, do you?
No, we're not. I think we bill it once. And that's it, that's all the notes I had, it covered us, so.
There's camping on public property right there.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
They do have a tent.
Do they have a tent? Oh, there they have a tent now?
They're not sleeping, they're spending the day. Whole shade place.
It's a shade tent. But yeah, the funniest bill was the chicken bill.
No chicken bill.
Sell chickens, selling chickens then?
The chickens.
Well, our, our ordinance is two.
Two, without.
I think the state ordinance is six.
No roosters.
I was just going to say, if my neighbor gets a rooster, I'm taking a rooster to Athens.
So Brian, can I talk about the GIST thing now, or no?
Yes, Mayor, I have it on my tag to do that, because I was just waiting for everybody.
Are y'all, are y'all done with legislative update? I guess we'll have this on Angel Day again in the near future after the special sessions.
Hey, you know what, Brian, I'll send you their wrap-up presentation and also their summary of those, it's an 80-page summary of all the bills for TML. And then you send that out to all the council and the guys.
Hardly 80 pages in summary.
That's pretty incredible. And the big thing was, this legislative session didn't do as much as the last one did. The last one had almost 8,000 bills, so.
All right, yes, Mayor, please.
Okay, so Robert Sellers, who is the president of the GIST Board Trustees, I don't know if they had a new election yet or not, he was last year. They did have a new election?
No, not for that.
Okay, yeah, they had an election for Board Trustees. I don't know if he's still president, is my point. Anyway, he approached me and wanted to build a coalition between the Berlin Elementary School District and the three cities it serves as far as the city leadership goes. And you've got that email and that proposed revolution, a revolution. There's no really prepared, you know, list of, you know, priorities or anything. It's just a, you know, let's build this coalition, let's figure out how we can improve our working relationship together. And I think it's a great idea. The, the resolution that's been proposed, you also have a copy of that. I'm just going to over briefly create a strong coalition with the districts and the three cities, open communication and collaboration between all parties, collaborate, let's see, ongoing communication, joint planning, foster relationships, sharing vision and have a shared vision, work together to overcome challenges of, you know, learning, learning issues for students. And the last whereas on the first page is proposing the mayors of each city plus one additional city government representative as designated by each mayor, now we make those decisions as a group. And then the city manager or their designee, and then the GIST Board of Trustees President, the Chair of the District Affairs Committee, and the GIST Superintendent, as people that are on the actual coalition. And then another objective is to serve as ambassadors and advocates for the district. So I will stop there, see what people's thoughts are and see what questions you have or any concerns you have about the current resolution.
Can you give your commentary program?
Okay, yeah, I mean, I support it.
I think it's a great idea. I think the school system should have reached out for a lot more joint operations like this a lot sooner, but I'm glad that they've done it now and that we can move forward with that.
Sounds good.
Is this a thumbs up, thumbs down situation?
Well, I will give an editorial comment on the lines of what Whitney said is, you know, a better place than ever. I think it's a good start, but, you know, they haven't always been the best partner. And if this is what it takes for them to start being a better partner, then definitely I'll for it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. What immediately comes to mind for me is the Environment Learning Center that we're working on. One of the things that we need to partner with the school district on is parking. And there's two schools that are adjacent to that property, and there's lots of parking in those school parking lots. And, you know, I have talked to the school board over the years of partnering with them. And, you know, in previous years, we had talked about some financial investment from the school district in this, because it is actually a great asset for the district and something that they don't have in the district is an Environment Learning Center. So, anyway, just for that project alone, I would be excited to have this kind of partnership and collaboration with the district.
Well, I think it's a great idea because I am a sub in the schools and I see what's going on. And I would sometimes just say, I let them know what I do, that I'm a city council person, and you would be surprised how receptive, especially in the high schools, they won't listen. They won't learn what's going on, so. And that's how I told them about you, Blake. And they were really excited to hear of an 18-year-old being on the city council. I mean, they were super excited, so I think this is a great idea. Yeah, but you know, when you were 18, I thought, he was fortunate, like when he was 18, they went, whoa. And it's one of them said, I want to come to elementary school, yeah, I said, you do. I said, I thought it was, I thought it was a homeschool, I said, you do. So, anyway, great idea, I'd love to like to know. Thank you.
Brian?
Mayor, I like that, you know, there's been issues over the years that we've, we've tried to push. There's another project, I'm more sure, you know, that we have an interest for economic development purposes. And so I think this elevates that conversation and kind of institutionalizes to make sure that we get to have it. So I absolutely am in favor of it.
Can I get the microphone back? Sorry.
Is there all down here now?
So, this is very much worded one-way in regards to, you know, working collaboratively, working together, you know, for the good of the school district. I think we need to put some wording in here that is bifurcating that both directions. That's it, that's not the right use of that word. You know, for example, you know, it talks about serving as ambassadors and advocates to the district initiatives, priorities and accomplishments. I think we need to put something in here about, you know, working together to serve for the good of the communities also.
So, Mayor, I, very good point. I'm on that community hospital advisory board for Lake Point, and it does tend to be one-sided sometimes. And so, I mean, it's great, we get to learn a lot about what's going on with the hospital, but there's also things that we want to make sure our community is being taken care of. And so I think you're absolutely right, Mayor. We, that would be a small area we could push back, but I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, so I'm going to have a call with Robert this next week. And they want to develop, they want us to approve this resolution, which they've already approved at the GIST level, which, you know, I think it needs to be revised to have that bidirectional statement in there. And they also want to develop a memorandum of understanding, and we can certainly make sure our interests are considered more succinctly in that memorandum of understanding too. So I'll get with him and then we'll try, we'll try to put this on a consent agenda for an upcoming meeting, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. And which of you elected officials would like to be that second person? And one hand raised, two hand raised?
Could I say something real quick?
Yeah. You gotta have one from, Blake works with the youth council, so that's kind of interesting. I understand the KRV thing, but.
I don't know if this is a concern or what, it's just, it rings in my head when I read this. Is this a result of failure of their bond? Do they want help from the cities to promote that? Is that what this is?
You know, I don't know, I'd like to not need someone about that. I will tell you this, that I have this little list in my binder of what I wanted to accomplish while I was mayor, and one of them was this kind of a relationship. And so I'm glad to see it, even if it is not in the viewers.
It's about time, but I'm wondering if that's the whole basis.
I don't know, do you want me to ask him that?
Yeah, they're no.
I'm just going to. But I think that we'll have a, you know, detailed conversation with him about, you know, this looks a little bit one-sided to the cities to support the schools and, you know, we have felt, you know, a little bit lacking on the other side, and we need to strengthen this and that together.
Yes.
It should be working both ways.
Absolutely should.
Should be working both ways.
And really, I mean, you, you mentioned the point, Blake, about the work with the youth advisory council, because I think it's really important to encourage the kids that are coming up through the district to be involved in our community, but also to stay here and to invest in our community. So, you know, I feel, I feel really blessed. They've been very open to having conversations with me specifically about the Environment Learning Center. So, I feel like when I said I'll have my time, you know, I believed that I would have opportunities to speak to that.
Yes, and we'll carry your banner too.
Yeah, of course, but, but from, but from a larger perspective, I, I think working with the, with the youth advisory council and strengthening that and pulling the leadership and developing those relationships is really key.
I wonder if a suggestion I could make to Robert is, you know, because Garland has a youth advisory council, you know, maybe we have one student from each, I don't even know if Saksie has one. You know, we include one student from those advisory councils as part of, you know, maybe they're just, they're not a voting member, but they're.
I would, I, that's one of the things I've been saying too, is I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that involvement from, from the Chair of the Youth Advisory Council, because ultimately this affects them more than it affects me or anybody else here, because they're the ones that are learning. So, yes, I would like to see that suggestion too, because I think that would even, even more benefit their purpose of this.
All right. So, as you guys have ahead of schedule, so we promised to get you all out of here by 5:00 today. Let's see how close we can get to that. So we have a couple of wrap-up things we want to do. One, I'm, well, actually, excuse me, I just remembered. We, let's take one quick five-minute break, because there's a couple of things I want to put up here from our other list, and then we will do our wrap-up and stuff, so. All right, cameras on, so we're going to go ahead and get started in our final discussions. So, Robert is putting together that one slide that kind of shows where we think our resources are versus what some of the big ticket items are for this year. Remember, you know, we're not asking council to make a specific decision, like we want that pickup truck bought, or, you know, we want this done. But we're, this is more of the strategy type of issues. But, you know, you've seen the big numbers. And so, as we, as we kind of discuss this out, part of this is, it's kind of like with the mayor who was here a while ago on the ARPA funds, you know, there were some things that were hot topic, I'm like, supporting the generators for the civilization. So, we did carve that out, but mostly it was like, are we okay with the proposed broadband projects as a whole and some of the other expenses? And then, and then saying that we would use the rest of it for water sewer projects, of which we identified at least a couple of the Waterloo project. So, today what I want to do is similar to, to that, is, you know, we have, we have several buckets of money, some of which have to be or needs to be restricted to one time. And, you know, and then quite a bit of that can be used for ongoing. So what we want to do is to hear from council, what, where is your pain point? You know, in terms of a threshold, you know, for example, if we say that, you know, you know, if we, if we come back, this is one way out of the, if we came back and said, you know, there were 12 positions asked for, and, you know, we want to support, you know, in the actual city managers for cover the budget, we've got six of them in there, and there were three vehicles we need to buy. I might try to use one time funds to buy the vehicles, if they can't go through the enterprise program, but if they could, that would be fine. And, and then use the ongoing funds for that. Or, you know, if we, if we, like, for example, that PCI program, and Gary didn't say this right yesterday, I just want to bring it back, back to that. They spent seven months to do a quarter of the city quadrant. So, that is 28 months, almost three years, to do the entire city versus two units. There's a huge value, even though it's a big ticket item, it's a huge value of having the entire city done in a much more thorough manner, because they're using, although they have their techniques, they're still using a lot of judgment versus the software, which would be more objective. So, so if there's anything that's on your hot button item that, right, we have to do this, or we have to do that, and then how we carve the rest of it. this, or we have to do that, and then how we carve the rest of it out, that's what I would really want to hear today. So are we almost there?
Almost there.
We're gonna, we're almost there. And then...
While we're, while we're waiting for that, maybe this is on your list, you know, it's a little hard with these requests to know what's in that equipment 530 and this other 840, so can you talk to them?
Yeah, what was it again, Mayor? Which one?
On the request side, I understand the employee pay midpoint, I understand additional staff, the equipment of 530 and the other of 840, is that everything that was on all departments list? Is that...
Okay, yeah, give me one second here. And yes, it is, Mayor. If you go, if you look in the Bigfoot notebook we sent you earlier this week, page nine is a salmon color or peach color document, that's the entire thing. And although Robert kind of wrote some of it out as to how much his equipment and whatever, it's, it's about, it's over $3 million worth of request, and that gives the entire list of this year, with the exception of pay, which we kind of do more corporately globally, which is, which we discussed yesterday morning. This is the department-specific list of people, equipment, programs, increased cost, of increased cost above and beyond just normal contract increases. It's that list right here, and I see most of you, y'all have that pulled up. So...
Two, six, seven, nine. So if I take the 1.3, the 530, the 840, that's 2.670, and you're saying that equates to page nine, two, six, seven, nine?
Yes, ma'am.
But excludes the other items down?
It's rounding.
Right, but excludes the other items down below?
No, it does not. This summary total did not include the utility fund or any of those, this is all general fund stuff.
Okay, yes.
On this summary list here.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
When you go to page nine, it comes down to two, six, seven, nine, and then there's four items underneath that.
Yes.
Those aren't utility fund items?
Two of them are. One of them is...
One of them is inspection fee fund. And one's inspection fee fund, one's utility billing, and then two are C I P.
Yes.
The facilities.
Okay. So there, there are four separate funds, or three separate funds, inspection fee fund, utility billing, or utility fund, and then two that would be out of C I P, which would and could affect the general fund.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand why those are excluded. I understand the utility fund being excluded, but...
Yeah, what would happen is, on the public works, the C I P ones, is that if we did not identify one-time source of funds, we would have to increase the transfer for one year to do those projects.
Okay. So...
So technically, Mayor, we really have the 2,679 plus 145,000 in projects that would affect the general fund.
All right, but on this green red page, so let me ask it this way. So we just had two days of presentations from department heads. Does this list on page nine, and therefore this red up here, pretty much entail the requests that we heard over the last two minutes?
Yes, and this list would not include the utility fund projects.
Right.
Yes, or everything else.
Okay. All right.
So what we asked staff divisions was to add the employee pay at the midpoint as a starting point for the discussion. We have 13.75 general fund employees, remember there's another one in the utility billing, so that's a total of 1.3. There's equipment, and some of that equipment would be related to that, or do we have the people? Is that personnel only? Or is that...
Only, so if there's a vehicle...
Okay. So if there's a vehicle, sorry.
Robert, we're trying to pull your big one off, did you update that on the share drive?
Yes, ma'am. It is called resources requests two.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. That's different than this one.
It's that one. It's, it's that one there.
Oh, it's that one, okay.
Yeah, so we were trying to get, be able to summarize all the things that have been identified, so that we can kind of start crafting some sort of how we're going to get there discussion. So based on the earlier conversation today, we have added in the, the cares funding, the amount that is left in cares, 1.5 million. The 1.5 million includes a small amount that is left in the business development piece, there's a portion that we have not yet spent in the individual systems, and then there is some light double funds, including the $750,000 clawback. So that's why we came up with the 1.5 million. And we would have put the land up here, but only to ask her again to, to let y'all know that that is still available, and we have not specifically identified what to do with that. You had a discussion about that earlier, so it's just on the list, just, just so we can say. So we have about 1.2 million dollars available for ongoing expenses, and we have, when, do we end up with a timeout? I think your council discussion was a million, not, not 100,000.
Oh, it was a million originally, and I think...
Sorry, it's, yeah, it's a million, not 100,000, a little top percent of that.
Yeah.
Wow, we're short.
And then that will probably change your total by 900,000. Where's it? We have the one that was just prepared. I don't think, I don't know if we printed that one.
Did you save it under a new name again?
What's that?
It wasn't me.
We'll fix that here, just trying to do this on the fly.
What's in the other, what's in the other request?
So the other, there's a whole bunch of stuff on here that is not necessary, people or, or equipment. So the service, the 100,000 plus, or the P C I update, would be under other, the, let's see, the A C maintenance would be under other, the capital fuel system, now that might be under equipment, G I's trainings, initial training dollars.
That's what we're interested in, stuff that wasn't on the other that's gonna now get covered under the other on this sheet, we're gonna get taken off, that, that wasn't included in those numbers.
Well, yeah, but again, you know, we're not trying to craft the, the final proposed budget, what we're trying to do is, where, where are those pain points, where are the hot buttons that, you know, this, this is where I'm getting feedback from you to make sure we don't miss the boat when I submitted in August, and then everybody goes, this isn't here, the one we talked about.
The equipment on the right can be one-time, the other is probably recurring, is that a fair statement?
Mayor, remember, 140,000 of that other for the P C I is not ongoing, that would be repeated every four years. So that would be a one-time. Your equipment should be treated as one-time.
But the rest of other...
Most of the rest of others would be ongoing.
So can you guys split other between ongoing and one-time?
Yeah, we can, we can.
And if you need to do it later, that's fine, I just think it's important.
Yeah, we could do that, Mayor.
So y'all chose to put the, the highest level of pay raise on this right side of the ledger. You told me you weren't gonna do that to us, and then you did.
I'll wait for this, and we can change it, but, but, but the reason is, that has been our philosophy in prior years, but we were careful not to say recommendation A, B, C, there are options A, B, C.
And it says requests, so...
Change that to options. It was not intentional.
Yeah, and I don't think Matt was in the room when we had the presentation on this, the, the one thing, you know, I'll preface this with, it's very, very, very important to not only, you know, get the staffing we need, but it's also important to reward the current staffing we have. It's hard, hard decision to make when you have to give, you know, give one at the expense of another. The one thing I wanted to say again is, you know, this very good market analysis, and it showed three different options, and pretty much, when you look at the three different options, regardless of which one we take, it keeps us in the same general order of, of pay, the relationship to our neighboring communities, whether we, we pick option one, two, or three. So I think that's an important point to keep in mind. It's not like if we pick option one, we're number two on the list, and if we pick option two, we're number 18 on the list. We, we stay right where in the middle, regardless of which option we pick, for the most part.
Yeah, Mayor, you're right. I will add one little nuance to it, is that this information is always one years old, because at the time that we do the survey, these, these other cities have already adopted their budget. So when we implement it, we're implementing it for next year, which means that we will always be one year behind the other cities, and those cities are also going to be doing raises this year, and so that's why it's important for us to keep, but you know what? It's always gonna be static.
It's always gonna be that.
And it, it would always be static at that point, and I just, that's a little nuance, I just want to make sure.
Right, but the, the other cities are doing the same thing, they have the same situation too.
Yes.
I mean, it's not a perfect world.
No, it's not.
All right, so are you done, Robert?
No, ma'am.
He's working on the split right now.
Oh, no.
Well, that's cool.
So you want to talk about P B B while he's working on that?
We can, Mayor. One thing I was gonna point out on the one-time surplus of 500,000, this is a little bit less than what we actually think we're gonna hit the year at, if you may remember from the last time we had that discussion, but, you know, we still have to find some place that we're gonna pay that extra electric bill, that 388,000 dollar electric bill. Well, I know, but it's, but it's still gonna have to be paid. And it has to do with that winter storm, and all the cities have gotten such a, such a bill.
Don't pay the elected officials.
I mean, what is it, $5 for you guys, and we'd be toe the budget for that? How about we beat toe the governor's budget?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
All right, can you talk about P B B?
Sure, we can do that, Robert, building this. Let's see. All right. So as a part, whoa, I'm just making sure I'll be there for that. So as a part of what we have been working on this year in terms of implementing core basic budget, as you, as you know, it's, you know, our goal was to be able to have a different level of conversation with council about how our budgets are allocated. When you do it fund by fund, or even department by department, it doesn't give you enough clarity to know where we're actually allocating our dollars to. So the goal was to be able to create, you know, programs in such a way that we could see how those programs were aligned against our top priorities. So there was a ranking that we did a couple of years ago when we first got into this. You'll remember that there are multiple criteria that we use, there's the four core criteria, things like is it a state or federal mandate, things like, you know, how much revenue recovery? So if it's 100% funded, then you would get the max score, or if it's 50% funded, you might get only half that score. Community demand, so is, is that demand increasing or decreasing? And then we have seven strategic priorities, and so then we ranked it against that. So no one program can get a perfect score, it's not possible. So for example, you may have a specific police program that's mandated, and maybe even cost-effective, but, but it may not affect neighborhood quality, or may not affect, you know, culture and leisure. So that's, that's one thing, so that's why there's no perfect score on any particular project, because each one of them are clinically evaluated against other, against the, what would that be, Latin core, or the Latin criteria. So where we, where we ended up at, you know, that, that assignment was done a couple of years ago, and in this past year, there were times that, you know, we still felt like something wasn't quite right, and we spent more time on it. And so just, just the challenge, I think, you know, you would have along, along with any of us, is that at most, when we went back through it the second time and reevaluated some of that, at most, there was maybe a one or two number change. And so it really doesn't change the ranking that much. It, you know, the, the number of programs that would have gone from a three to a two, or a four to a three, or a drop to a, to a different level were very, very small. And then on top of that, you know, we, we went back through it this past year, just, just to make sure that we were including things like how many customers are affected, you know, what are the metrics we're measuring against for success? And so all of this comes into play when you're trying to figure out, you know, how do you get your hands around such a, a big 100-plus million dollar budget? So one thing that we did this year is, we went through an exercise to figure out, one, how to squeeze the budget, because we knew there's dollars left on, and if you look at these programs, you're not spending all of the dollars that we have allocated based on the budget. So we went back through an exercise, I mentioned one you did yesterday, like on our mowing contracts, that we consistently have about 40 or 50,000 dollars left over, and remember, some of that budget is because of rainfall, so, so it's weather, weather dependent too, but, but we're not spending it. And so those monies can be reallocated, you know, maybe it's Highway 66 median management, maybe it's, you know, some other program or cost. So in going, so in going through, I need visual reference here, but, so in going through this, this exercise, we identified about 350,000 dollars that we feel like needs to be, that we can reduce the budget for, or find other sources, and one particular one, find other sources to help pay for it. So that was step one. The second thing we did is, we went back and evaluated, evaluated the, evaluated P B B program that we felt like needed, or could use additional analysis. And it's for a couple of reasons, you know, for our fleet system this year, we ended up, you know, going with enterprise, which we think is going to save us money over time, not to mention have better, better equipment, more up-to-date equipment. We think that, for example, and this will be, if you go back to this page here, it's in pink, pink and white, these were about a dozen items we identified that we think that we need more conversation about. So Blake, you mentioned this morning, you asked about G B B. So I'm gonna give you a little, maybe different perspective on this question. So a number of years ago, you know, I asked our library, you know, how successful is our G B B program? And at that time, they said, well, we had 20 people sign up last year. Now remember, this is six, seven years ago, but still, you see that the numbers are still relatively the same, and years that we've had only just a couple. And so we said, okay, so we're spending 15,000, that was the direct cost at that time, we didn't have a G B B coordinator, this was the direct cost for materials and supplies and things like that. So they said, okay, we had 20. I said, okay, so, so what was, you know, what was your success ratio? Well, 18 passed the class, so it was a little test they take, and they, okay, that's great. So then the question came down to, how many passed the G B B? Two people. So we were actually spending 7,500 dollars for a person who actually successfully passed the G B B. And remember, passing the G B B is what changes your... And remember, passing the GDB is what changes your life. That's where you're going to earn twenty percent more income over the course of your lifetime. So, so at that point, the question was, what did we do to, to identify people who may be English as a second language first, who may be private tutoring or personal tutoring before they even go through the GDB program? And so from that, there were modifications made. But, but to be honest, we're still having a very few amount of people actually passing the GDB. And now we have a GDB coordinator as well. So in our mind, this is the performance issue. Is this a program we need to spend more time on? Figure out if there's a better way. Maybe it's partnering with the local college. You know, maybe their passing ratio was higher than ours because they knew stuff that we don't know. Now, I think the personal touch, Laura is absolutely right about because, you know, that, that personal tutoring and stuff like that, I think, you know, does make a difference. But I think that that's a program we identified we want to spend more time on. Household hazardous waste is another. Because as Martha mentioned yesterday, you know, we learned something really important this week, that latex paint is not household hazardous waste. And so we know from, from the way that the program is growing that, that our cost will increase about twenty thousand dollars next year if we don't change anything about household hazardous waste. We think that there's got to be some better solution. Maybe it's more community education. You know, as Martha mentioned, maybe it's, you know, maybe, it's not really a renegotiation of the contract because the contract is the same for all the cities that participate. But there may be some other things that we do. Or maybe it is that we eliminate it. We don't want to eliminate it because if you don't have an alternative like that, people are just going to put it in the trash. It's going to be in their garbage and then, you know, they, that the, you know, our vendor may or may not notice. The arts program, I would elevate that maybe to a more of a policy level discussion. You know, or do we want to continue to contribute forty thousand dollars a year? Is that something that we don't want to give anymore? So, so my only point with, with all of this is that each one of these really was, was identified for a different reason for us to have this discussion, you know, and to say that, like I'll give you one last one, custodial services. Similar to what we did with Fleet, when we had this conversation with Enterprise, we made a value judgment about, you know, whether or not we would say contract that the maintenance out. And one of the reasons we decided not to at that time is that we felt like we were still going to be a robust maintenance program for the yellow wire and the trucks and vehicles that were not in the Enterprise program. And but with custodial services, you look at all the things that we have, you know, wouldn't it be more efficient for a company to come in with a very regimented list of tasks and go into each building and then do external work? This is, this is, this happens all over the country. Pretty much every private business does this. And if we did, there's still maybe a need for, you know, permanent staff, like say at the RCC where you've got to clean that shower or that bathroom several times during the day. But we don't know that until we actually go through that outsourcing exercise. So, so the point I wanted to make is, and I was, we were thinking that maybe you guys might have some other programs that you might have identified as a possible for discussion. But this is where we're at with this because we think there's more work that we can do with this. And we, we did do one thing, and I don't remember. Did we already finish? Yeah, did you have that slide? I should have got the one with the circle. All right, we're going to pull up the, this one slide. I want to just kind of show you what I'm getting at. No, it's not. It's the one with the circle, the graph that you did. The graph on PBB.
Oh.
Did you put that one in there yet?
I did.
What's it called, Robert?
Expenditures by priority.
Well, that's why you didn't know when I asked about...
We circled.
Okay, all right.
That quartile was what you did?
By priority, yes, it's done by quartile.
Okay. So council, you'll remember that as we, with the ranking, based on the scores, they're broken down into four quadrants, quartiles. And so you can see quartile one is going to be the highest in terms of the dollars simply because it's all your, your public safety, police and fire, a lot of your public work stuff that have the higher scores, the scores in the sixties and seventies and those kind of things. And then as you get through into each other quartile, you can see how the numbers drop until we have about five million dollars in quartile four. What we didn't feel like the answer was, was, is, you know, when we went through this initial exercise and talking to other cities and seeing how they do it as well as with the consultant that helped us build this program, was that, you know, very few cities have tried to just take a straight line and say, we want to reallocate everything in quartile four. And the ones that did, they, they said it took them several years to do that and it took time to be able to do it. Because based on the ranking, what happens is, this is your library. This is, this is the RCC. So when you start looking at those, all the different criteria, a lot of the quality of life programs are in that section. So what we thought and what we spent time on was identifying specific programs that we need to spend more time on as opposed to whether it was in quartile four or three. Now, we started there because that was a great starting point. But that's why we have identified these groupings that you see, these dozen programs. That's where we identified those at. So, and I saw we had our other thing ready to go up too. But, but did you guys ignore through the book? I know y'all didn't have much time with it. Were there any other programs? I know you asked later about GDB and I don't remember who asked about. There was one of the others. But is there anything else that you guys saw, Mary, that you would think that we probably should spend more time on?
In this book?
It's cool.
I think you made a good point about the custodial services. I, I would love to see a comparison of what it would cost us to have a vendor come in and do that, understanding that we're going to have to have, you know, a certain level of the staff that are custodial services. But as far as just the weekly or bi-weekly service to some of our buildings, I, I think that would be a good exercise to go through.
Yeah, I agree too. Brown?
The one I saw that seemed to be fairly cheap too was the deep cleaning of the dispatch center at the police station.
Well, one thing I didn't say yesterday, remember, you're hearing everything they ask for. To me, that's what I want to do before this year's end. I want to do that this summer.
Yes, it is.
I want to knock that thing out. And it's not going to be a budget item for next year.
That's adding to, not surprising, Frank, right?
And, you know, I was, I was kind of surprised to see VIBs with a score, quartile four because, you know, unless, unless the program has changed. I mean, they save a lot of money and time for officers doing the oil changes, doing a lot of the things that, that frees up our officers.
So understand from a value judgment, we love VIBs. I mean, we absolutely love them and we think it's a robust program and it's a part of that volunteer effort that we're so proud of. You know, so the question maybe that, that is, we're spending resources to manage. You know, one thing that, that I think is important to knowledge is that you have overhead in this too now. And before, when somebody said, well, how much does it cost us to put on the downtown program? We would have told you what we were spending out of the hotel, hotel money and the general fund money. But now how much time it really is taking us, there's a value to all that too. And so to your, to your point, you know, we think that, you know, that may be an area for us to look at. Is it possible to have somebody, volunteers to do that, that supervision and maybe cut some of that and reallocate some of their time?
Boy, I mean, it's, it's a quartile four, but I certainly wouldn't want to cut that over.
I think maybe it would help if you explained again how the scoring's done as far as why it falls in a certain quartile and it's the alignment.
I just did that.
We did.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I was over there.
Oh, right.
So I just want to make sure.
There's no perfect way to score and I understand, you know.
Right. And, and that was, it was one of those where when we saw some of the programs, it was kind of like, oh, wow. But it's just all with the, you know, alignment of the strategic plan.
And like, I think I saw you pointing at this a couple of times. Yes, this is the list of all the programs that we have in the city by quartile. And so if we were, I know we had made the book where you could see the details, but if you were trying to look for a quick summary of this, this is where you would find it.
Right, well, you know. I don't know that you want to end with my comments, so.
Okay.
But I'll go first. So I, I am, I am not thinking the PBB process was what I was expecting by any means. PBB budgeting should be about looking at programs and seeing what programs you, you discontinue or severely curtail that you don't, you know, that you have higher priorities in a city. When I look at this list that adds up to the three hundred and forty thousand dollars, this is no, no, no more than line item budgeting and figuring out where our budget is inflated versus our actual costs. This is not PBB budgeting. So I'm very frustrated.
Well, what I, what I would add though, Mary, is that whereas the exercise may have started there, it affects every program in the city. On top of that, we identified programs that I think are absolutely doing what you think is, maybe we curtail it, maybe we contract it out, maybe we outsource it, maybe we, you know, that...
Oh, we haven't, we're not there and that's not the proposal on the budget. You look at the, you look at the summary page and what it is, is line item budgeting where we have over budgeted compared to actual. That's what the three hundred and forty thousand dollars in savings is. So I don't think we're anywhere where we need to be in PBB budgeting. My other concern is this, to me, looks like a finance initiative, not a department-led initiative on PBB budgeting. So that's my other frustration with this.
So how did we get to these number reductions? Because they're all even or, you know, they're all, numbers are similar to each other. When you go down, is it just, did you tell each department, hey, reduce your budget by five percent and...
So what, what we did was, we, we did not give them a target and we have in years past when, you know, when the economy is tanking and we really do need to, we usually done it on a target basis. What we challenged them was instead was to go back and to look at their budget and find areas where we're just not spending the money. And every department participated in this process to say, you know, these are things that we're not doing. The reason that you're seeing some of the same numbers is that, let's say it was a, you know, an easy one is the mowing because it is one contract within one program. But in, but in some respect, some of those expenses affect multiple programs such as a person. Not, you know, it's, it's not often that one person assigned one program. The crisis intervention is on where we have two now. But in some other cases, you know, you may have an individual who is split over three, four, five, six programs. And so if we were to lower a consulting services contract or to eliminate a, an expense, it may have affected multiple lines. And I think what we did, this is part of the accounting exercise part, we would, we may have done an even allocation of those expenses.
Thank you for that explanation. So just, so like, okay, emergency dispatch, there's reduction, program reduction of thirty-five, twenty-nine. So in reality, that would have been forty-five, twenty-nine minus air. Or, I mean, because there's a request to add more funding to dispatch. So is that already taken into account?
So, so part of, going back to what I said yesterday, think about it from this perspective. So, you know, at the point when, you know, we get through the, the presentations from staff in May and then we start, we get our first real preliminary property tax analysis at the end of May, that's when we started to be able to look at, oh, how close are we going to be to hit the margins? How far away? What do we need to do? That's when we directed staff to go back to the drawing board and to figure out where they're not spending those dollars and where we can reallocate those too. So that was a part of an initial exercise. What we're trying to say is that there's more work to be done, some of which we may be able to finish in July and some of which will take a little bit longer.
I'll just add one last thing. You know, I'm just a little nervous. Decreasing, you know, like three forty. And I don't necessarily know exactly what we're reducing within this. I mean, I know it's, you know.
It's line item, it's all of this, sorry.
Or under spending.
Right. I mean, just, I don't know. I guess, all right.
So let me say this. You're not making the decision today on, on how we're going to reduce that budget. What we've done is identify what we believe we can reduce the budget for to provide resources to something else. What we are able to do is to actually give you that breakdown. We can send that to the city councils and you can see exactly what line items were reduced.
Does this purple, right?
Oh, Mary, to, to your form. We have, we had it all purple and a orange. But this is only the programs that actually were reduced. But they don't tell you what line item, that's what I think was...
Right, yeah. So I, I know this is in a certain detail, but I guess what I'm trying to say is maybe it's not detailed enough for me to build.
I think you can trust that with line item managing these budget line items.
Yeah.
With each line item is so insignificant and only adds up to three hundred and forty thousand. That's, that's my...
Yeah, no, I hear you, I hear you. I mean, that, that's just...
I mean, it's not like a program of three hundred and forty thousand going away. It's three thousand year, four thousand year, three thousand year.
Right.
Which should happen.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just, I...
You still want to be glad everybody's list?
I'm not going to get it. You can throw it up.
And that one's the...
Martha wants it.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so, you know, I have some of the same curiosity that you have there of like, you know, because I know, I'll just give an example here on the community-focused programs. You know, there's a deduction of seventy-five hundred dollars from emergency management.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know that you need to add a lot more than that. It could be specific line items or programs that are obsolete or not being used. And we take those away and there's a bit of snarky. Then the same thing with the EMS operations. It's a flat seventy-five hundred dollars there. Yeah, and because I know that we need more funding in the EMS. And so it would be good in those circumstances to kind of know.
And that's what I'm talking about, exactly that. It's sort of those areas where I'm like, okay, I know it's defunding this, but what is this?
So, so to Martha, go back to your point. In this particular case, it's multiple line items again. There are some where it is only one, like for the mowing contract, for example, one program, one, one line. But in some cases, it's several different. It might be a supply, it might be contractual service, it might be whatever, but it was multiple line items.
Yeah.
And, and go back to whether this was department-initiated. Yes, because the departments have to make those choices themselves as opposed to us dedicating to them either a dollar amount, percentage amount, or those kind of things.
Yeah, and so, so when I, when I look at these similar numbers for two different line items, then I think that it's more percentage-based than program-based because like, I'm looking at community development here and I got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I've got 10 lines there of different programs, and they all have the same amount deducted, which is 33, 53.
So, understand that some programs are allocated on the basis of some type of percentage. So, if, let's just say, we pick one, there's a $10,000 reduction in, you know, travel, you know, and supplies. So, in that affected five programs, they may have equally or percentage wise, one 20th, one 20th over five programs. That's why you're seeing some similarities.
And I think maybe just some kind of explanation of that would have been helpful in looking at, because I'm looking at this and I'm trying to figure out, they must have used percentages or spread out over multiple programs, the same expense.
It is a good point. We took this as, here's what we think we need to do, or we think we can do for this year to help contribute to, you know, our future, you know, to meet other needs. But, and certainly we can provide the list, a specific list to you. But we weren't doing this to think that we were going to get in and identify whether or not, you know, emergency management, you know, needed that extra $100 for janitorial supplies.
I get that, I get that, it is a better view than that. We're just trying to figure out how to analyze the debt that we would be giving.
Sure.
It actually might help my cynicism because when I look at this, I go, this was a finance exercise and it was an across-the-board allocation, and that might be why I have that opinion.
Yeah.
Where if I saw that you were reducing contract labor and it affects these five line items, I might have a little bit more confidence to see.
Yeah, and it's to your point, because when I looked at this listing, except for a few things like the GED, I didn't see programs, the way I do programs, these are operations.
These are line item budgets.
But that doesn't mean that underneath patrol, which is what I was just looking at, patrol services, you know, had a reduction of $3,500. Maybe that was within a program of patrol services. Okay, 15 was not as effective, which would be, to your point, priority-based budgeting, and that's why they reduced that non-line item. So, if we knew that little bit more additional detail, because again, these aren't programs, except for the GED one, and maybe more into other ones, the rest of them are operational. There's programs within those operations, and maybe that's where that reduction is coming from.
And I would say too, it is possible that as we go through the rest of this exercise in July, there may be some programs, we come back to you guys as a policy level discussion. You know, are we prepared to eliminate this function or eliminate that program? And I think that's where we'll have some additional discussion in August.
Yeah, I mean, we're spending a lot of time on the 340,000. And keep in mind, guys, the department heads went through this and said, this is where we can save some money, and we need money in some more priority areas. So, what we really need to be talking about is the overall shortfall. Not that we don't need additional information on the 340, but that's not the big issue.
All right, can you pull up the other, the one that's not a picture anymore? Oh, half of it is a picture. Okay, so. Okay, so council, just make sure, we revealed the slide. It was a picture format, we wanted to add some additional information to it, so we had to reveal the slide, so.
Hang on a second. He asked you if you had any other programs you wanted to look at, I think you need to say.
Oh, okay, yeah, I forgot about that. So, I'm actually here, but interested in what is contained in community awards and roulette spirit? Why is it such a high budget?
Seventy, seventy-five thousand.
I asked about that just for that.
Oh, you did, I asked, I just looked at that, and I'm like, what?
Well, he just asked, you know, what other programs should we look at? And I don't think we came back to your comment yesterday, so.
Well, my comment yesterday was maximum. I mean, if we're doing a spirit of roulette award every month, which we haven't done, we've probably done one a quarter or something like that. But if we did it, if we did it 12 months, if we did the Smart Yard and all that, if we did that next time. But if we did, that would be 24 of them. If we applied that 24 to that 74,000 dollars, that would be $74,000 per award. If we did 24, you don't have.
Just give him a $5,000 check.
Yeah, I'm serious, so just be done.
I'm thinking maybe something to do with staff time.
Yes, so, so the explanation that I had yesterday, in terms of remembering it accurately, is that there was overhead built into that. It wasn't just the award itself.
Yes.
That's a big problem. That's the type of stuff we should be talking about.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
That's another program.
Let me help you with community awards. So, of the $74,000 budget for that program, $58,000 of that is staff time. So, that's city manager time, community relations manager, community coordinator, creative services, deputy city manager, detective assistant, all contributed to that. So, the remaining, you know, the top $20,000 is made up from regular services plus.
So, community awards, I'm assuming like the annual venue award that we would usually have?
No, this is just the spirit of roulette and the smart yard.
But the city manager, deputy city manager, and nothing to do with that.
But still, well, that allocation may have been when they would apply for still under our umbrella.
That's one of the programs we do, mainly from neighborhood, from city manager, it's all just community dollars.
So, let me say this, and this has to be worked all the time. You may remember when you went through this last, or last summer. You know, one of the questions we had is, how in the world, why is it costing so much to manage fire fleet? Right? And at that time, basically what the chief had done is that, you know, because they washed them, they cleaned them, they checked all the hoses, every ship. And at that point, he had allocated like 5% of every firefighter, you know, to that program. Well, you know, they do touch it, but, you know, that's not an $800,000 a year program, you know? And so, part of what we've been doing this past year is fixing some of those. So, this is where we have, I think, maybe dropped the ball a little bit, we'll go back and make sure whether we did or not, is that if we move a program under another umbrella, we may need to reallocate some of the supervision, supervisory costs, and that too, overhead costs.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that specifically? So, the other thing that we just brought up, that is a good point. Under the VIPS program, there's about, I think, one full staff member that's allocated to that program. Why?
So, definitely one of the reasons we identified this, and in my mind, it leaves an efficiency issue. So, is that an area we could reduce cost or reallocate somebody back to the street or whatever by, you know, having a volunteer take that on and manage the program entirely? Maybe one possibility. I don't have an answer for you today, but that's one of the reasons why we identified that program, to see if we can actually reduce some of our costs or repurpose those dollars.
I think the way that salaries are depicted in it are very confusing. I think that they're steering what the actual cost of the program is. I understand that you're trying to add in the overhead, industry overhead, and all that kind of stuff to come up with a million dollar or $100 million budget. So, you have to add that stuff in. But the program cost themselves is significantly less. I mean, the VIPS one per se, the cost of that program is 5% of what you actually have in there because it's 95% overhead. So, it's skewing the numbers, making everybody freak out because we're seeing the programs that are $800,000 for fleet. And so, we know it's not that, but it's all because of personnel costs.
Okay, so, park that for a minute for me to say this. So, let's take crisis intervention. Pretty much everything we're doing is people, aren't we? 70% plus of our budget is people. And a lot of our programs were managed by our own people. So, I think maybe what you're saying is, there's a, you know, there's the direct touch. This is the cost we owe for supplies. This is the person who ran the program versus the overhead side of it, which is that person supervisor and that person supervisor. That may be the part of it that maybe there's a way to better explain that or better understand so that we can say the direct cost of running that program on VIPS might be less than $10,000. But by the time you stack on overhead, it's going to feel like it's a lot more expensive.
But that's a valid, that's a valid business consideration because, and I don't know that VIPS is the right example, but if it's costing $50,000 in overhead to run VIPS and $10,000 in hard costs, then $50,000 in overhead could be allocated to a police officer in the street. So, you've got to be able to allocate overhead to. You've just got to be able to have the detailed information to make the decisions after that. So, I don't think we're saying get rid of the overhead allocations. And certainly with this big of a project and this big of a budget, there's going to be problems with the numbers, you know, we've got to understand that.
Thank you for explaining that. One last thing. The accreditation management, $137,000. I know we have an accreditation manager, but I don't think she's paid or hear that.
No, I think that's probably a police, and that is a full-time person. And again, there's probably a little overhead. There's the rent cost again, the supplies, the services and things like that, and this will compare to.
Yeah, I was saying, accreditation management, $137,000.
So, here's one thing we'll do, and staff, we'll go back to the drawing board to see how we may be able to determine like what the direct cost is versus indirect. I think that will go a long way. Some programs, the indirect may be very little, but in some cases, the indirect may be more than the direct just simply because of who it falls under in the umbrella and all that.
Yeah, I think, like Timmy said, I think that's a really good idea, is if you separate that, but also still, so separate it, but also include it. Just don't add those two numbers together and say, that's how much the burden costs. Just say that the program, the hard cost for this program is this, plus the staff member allocated to that program. Is that right?
I'm just saying the direct staffing cost is, it's direct cost and overhead cost. Or direct cost and indirect cost is the designation.
Okay.
And there's absolutely staffing cost and direct cost.
I think when I was identifying the indirect, maybe the oversight or the admin overhead. So, if like crisis intervention, you know, the cost of J.J. Chad is a direct cost along with whatever supplies and services they have, but the sergeant that oversees them or the lieutenant that oversees the sergeant, those become overhead costs that although we think should be a part of the total cost, I think there's a way for us to help identify what that actually is.
So, for all the accountants in this room, one of the most fun accounting classes you can take is cost accounting. Either you're good at cost accounting or you suck. It's like geometry, either you're good at it or you suck. I'm not saying you suck, I've been said that. But it's.
All right, so I think we've got our margin orders in terms of that. And then, like I said, in August, you're probably going to see us bring back a few of these where we're going to have a policy level conversation between the bound. So, let's go back now to this chart and to Mary's point. Under your quest, I think we were going to change that to options.
I must have missed that, I love it. You spelled options.
Yeah, and you changed, thank you, okay. So, we, you now have a sense of what our resources are, and you've spent two days, and you have a better understanding of kind of what we think some of the larger issues are in terms of cost. And then, of course, there's the portion of this that's one time versus that's not one time. And our goal is not to have council, you know, say we want to buy that truck or that whatever. But what I do need is whatever guidance or feedback you feel like is important. So, in terms of, we're crafting a strategy here, so let's just take pain. So, if realizing that the cost of almost 14 employees is 1.3 billion, plus some of the equipment we would have to buy on top of that, maybe what we're doing is to say, we have a lot of challenges this year and we have a lot of needs. And some of those needs were barely for two years' outlook when Safra Bay opens up. So, in the meantime, you know, where perhaps is the pain point? You know, if, for example, if we feel like we can't, you know, bring pain all the way to midpoint, you know, is there a place that you're willing to say, don't bring us something worse than this? You know, and I will just tell you maybe what I know you would say if I asked you this specifically, but, you know, public safety steps, you know, I'm sure you want that in the budget. But in terms of how aggressive or competitive we are to the market, is there a cutoff point that you would not want to see your budget worst in? You know, is it, you know, is it zero? Is it 100% off the mark? Is it 4% off the mark?
We're 1.8 billion in the hole on ongoing costs. So, I don't even know that we have that option. It's the 3.978 versus the 2.140.
What is the 3.978 there?
On the right, am I looking at a different? I'm going other and I'm going one time. I don't know why it's split on.
Which one do you have, I mean, I guess you're having multiple lines to figure that out.
Four, two, four.
I'm looking at Blake's spreadsheet.
Oh, Blake, you're monitoring, there's Blake's.
Well, it has, you just had Robert, you had the one time down below under the requests. On the SharePoint, you have a one time down below.
I think Laura changed it once she got it.
What we have like may not be the most recent, because Laura is downloading it to her desktop. I'm altering it and then showing you.
There was a request to add, to change the other to ongoing and one time.
I know, and the one time needs to be down below so that we're looking at apples to apples.
Okay, all right.
Resources. And that's why it was easy for me to do, because I was thinking of this ledger here.
And then equipment too.
So, is that 3977? I can't see that number. Is that 3977? Okay, so 3977, and then on the left, is that 2140 up there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what the numbers on top of it is. So, we have needs of 3978 and we have sources of 2140.
Is that equipment, 530, one time, or is it?
Yeah, so, the, well, some of that equipment, yes. Some of the, some of the equipment is also one time equipment.
Okay, can you move that down? I think all the equipment could be one time.
So, that takes us down to like 3.4.
Well, some of the equipment, what staff you agree to, you would need all of that equipment.
That's right, but if we do need it, it's going to be one time.
That's right.
I'm just trying to get the occurring versus the one time.
Well, what if that equipment is one time upfront versus what goes into the?
Staff?
The.
The new staff.
Enterprise.
Enterprise.
Well, no, not all of this.
All right, so what's that, what's that number on the right, 3 what?
3447.
3447?
Yeah.
Minus 2140?
48, pretty much.
That's a million and three.
Yep.
Now, we've got to remember, we would not be bringing back every item. This is every item requested. Sometimes we go through several years before we actually fund something or propose to fund it. But this is, you're seeing the total population of all requests made, which was on that, that second color.
I'm just trying to understand what the occurring versus the occurring is.
Which was our goal, yeah.
So, if we went to a different salary level. Let's see where that's at.
Could be another option.
So, 1.5 would reduce that 300,000, 1.3 would. So, one point five would reduce that three hundred thousand, and one point three would reduce that five hundred thousand. I mean, I, I think you gotta look at, you know, splitting the baby there between new positions and, and salary increases.
And that's where I was kind of getting to, is I kind of started looking through this as, you know, what is that right number for employee? But, like, I don't think we need the four new police officers this year, because the main issue was start ramping up the staff in Sapphire Bay. That might be able to be delayed here.
But if we delay, but if we delay here, we need eight the next time, and twelve the next time, so.
You need, well, if, if, if Sapphire, on your current page for Sapphire Bay, I still am not sold that that's the current page for Sapphire Bay. I think Sapphire Bay is going to be a longer drawn out build out, and what we're anticipating provides us more years on the back end. So, it might be still a four, 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 but that whole thing that you showed are going to be moved back one year.
I disagree, um, because we're, to me, I don't, I don't associate that with Sapphire Bay, because like she said the other day, or yesterday, is that even without Sapphire Bay, we still have only seven officers on the street all the time, and, and our, the city our size is constantly running calls and having calls in queue. So, I think that comes back to our safety insurance, and not, I don't associate Sapphire Bay that much.
Does this include the specialized team that he was talking about?
Yes, so, again, um, you know, I'm not, at least I'm not prepared unless council agrees to, or purpose to get a special crime unit at this time.
Now.
So, you know, even though, but it is in the list.
But it's not these numbers.
But those are, like, maybe we could get away with two officers.
Is that including conditional staff?
You'll get.
Two doesn't, two doesn't, two doesn't give you a position now, it just puts, like.
Where you pull those, like, how everybody officers are worth that special crimes unit, how do they?
Thirteen point seven five.
Yeah, a V H L two, yeah, they had a V H L.
No, I had four V H Ls.
Oh, four V H Ls, I'm sorry.
That was a big pick.
Okay, let's, let's, what does the thirteen point seven five include?
Which one?
Let's, let's start there. What are the thirteen point seven five positions included? Who can answer that question? Who can even listen to that question?
I can go through here, animal services officer.
No clarification. Um, on this list, with the items that we said, uh, when we heard the additional request that we were willing to spend more time on, um, the special crimes unit did not make that cut. We didn't want to tell the department not to talk to you guys about it, because that, you're, we're trying to be transparent, that you hear everything, but it did not make it to this list, and I wasn't going to support it for this year.
So, can someone go through what the thirteen point seven five positions are that are on this one point three million? Robert is going to do it for us.
Yes, I can do the point there. Uh, it's the digital media specialist, that will point O F T E degrees, and H two O inspector is point point five F T E for the general fund, it's one F T E for the animal services officer, one F T E for the accountant two, even though there's funding for that, it's included on this list, uh, one F T E for the training battalion chief, one for the inspector, also for fire, uh, inspector, uh, one for the, uh, I T systems administrator, administrator for, uh, public safety, four police patrol officers, one detention officer, the, uh, two, uh, streets, uh, maintenance specialists with a patch truck, and then the point five F T E move a half-time custodian to full time. And that's your thirteen one.
And detective.
And one detective.
That makes sense. Thank you very much. Did that help?
Yes. Very much. We know you can take.
I don't know how you cut any of those positions.
What do you count?
No, well, uh.
For three years.
Three years.
Three years. With the CARES funding.
Yeah. So, the accountant two position is paid for through a different thought map to general fund.
In three years.
Right?
Is it in the million three?
Yes.
So, it isn't there.
Yes.
So, maybe thousands of them here can come out of them, right?
It's because the original request we made was out of the general fund, but then when we started to work with Ron, that's when we identified those ARPA funds, and it just needs to be looked out.
We can take eight thousand, hundred.
Eighty thousand. Yes.
Different media specialists.
I think it's a lot closer.
Do you think?
Really, it's, it's on the lower end, but.
Yeah. Because you know why?
It's, it's.
Out to the market for.
Police officers.
But you've got four room in there.
Right, we need to.
Well, you could do something like four police officers halfway, half the years worth.
Yeah.
That's the effect.
Yeah. Because we can't, I, the one time we had, we hired eight officers, right, and then hired like three by the next year.
Because it take, it took time.
Yeah.
It was a ramp up.
I mean, you could look at all of these positions and go, let's do this in three months, let's do this in six months, let's do this in nine months. You gotta fund it in future years, so you've gotta be a little careful.
If you use that, the cost of following here, you don't have money yet.
Well, you have to be a little careful, but you could do.
So, then, um, then I, I would propose then, if you have four officers, you can split that, would you two initially, two after the year? Is that?
Okay, if we do, we gotta back up to the other one after following here.
Right.
And we're gonna need four more then.
That's another council.
So, I'm gonna go for four now.
My four now.
Let's do four.
I was a joke, it was just a joke.
I, I would, I would suggest that, for the purposes of today, that you're not ready to make that level of decision. But I, when I'm after is, we want to support the four. Okay, then let's make sure that's on our list.
I support.
I support the four.
I would support the four this year, but Sapphire Bay is not further along, I would support the initial four next year.
Right.
That's fair.
Right. Because I still think we're behind in every day.
I agree with you on that, and that's what Blake told me on that, but I don't think we need to be ready for Sapphire Bay to be open in, in four years.
Right.
And have it full of staff.
The training battalion chief, they've been asking for that for so long, like every year.
Right.
And we have a training facility that no, nobody assigned to.
Right.
Work that facility, so it's kind of like.
We have a beautiful city, and we're not marketing it correctly, so don't talk to me about that much.
All right, all right.
She makes a good point.
I would say multiple people are, um, are providing that.
We definitely need the animal services.
Yep.
Animal services.
I, I would definitely need their attention.
I don't, I wouldn't think we're cutting any of those that are in that thirteen right now, thirteen and a half. I mean, I, I think it's fine to delay the four place if you want to do that, to try to get you a little bit of room, but.
Yeah.
I think every one of those that's in that right now is, is very worthy.
I, I really think the private, the cybercrime, uh, person needs to be somebody on my team. I think really.
Other team.
Now, that's a, that's a logistics issue about how it's managed, not how it's funded.
It's, it, the funding could change as a result of.
Well, I reckon people with a cyber degree, uh, they're not going to want to work for the local government, that, uh, they're not getting paid right.
I didn't say that, I just said the funding could change as a result of.
Yeah, I, I like the thought of that, although I think they would have to be a commissioned officer, uh, you know, so, I, I think like the discussion yesterday was, do you hire a cop and train them in cybersecurity, or do you hire an I T guy and train them to be a cop? I think that would be much easier to do, uh.
I don't understand why they need to be a cop, I'm sorry. We've got a whole police department full of commissioned officers that can work hand in hand with an I T person. I, I don't give that, but.
I think it would just be more seamless if they were commissioned. It, it wouldn't mean that they would be a patrol officer, but they would have that, uh.
Knowledge.
Authority.
I think one of the reasons is that we're listening to the Ukraine, Ukraine, and Europe times, so.
Set up the what?
To the Ukraine.
You could learn a lot.
Can we separate the, uh, cost of the four patrol officers from the one vehicle, that that needs to?
So, what we said, any equipment associated with the people we would do out of the one time money.
Okay, so it would be four sixty.
That's correct. But he's already done that in the summary, by moving the equipment down here to the one time stuff, so that's still purely operational.
Got it, thank you.
So, let's talk about the resources side. So, the eight hundred thousand is the current surplus that you think is out there because of property taxes, and that number could go up.
It's, it's what we know, and what we know as of the end of May.
Right. And then the million dollars, that is the additional, um, uh, taxes we have available as a result of not having to service the debt on profit. Is that correct?
And, and, and the increment you would have had otherwise for attachment, and that was from the previous discussion.
It's basically moving I N S to.
Yes.
Okay. And then the ongoing other, you know, that'd be a little hard to dissect right here.
That, that's all kinds of things. It's some department requests for additional funding. You know, you heard Joey talk about G I S training, there is the, um, some additional library materials.
But I like the things like playground rehab, because that would be in the one time stuff.
Yes, I would say.
Well, this is what I'd have to say, Brian, you have some work to do.
Yeah, we, 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 yes, trying to do it in August, otherwise we don't have August, if we're gonna do it today, you know?
Do you think you have enough guidance from us? I know we don't.
I do, except, except this. Now, so, where, where I think I'm hearing council saying is that we, we really want as many of these positions as possible. In other words, this list, you feel strongly enough about that we need to do. Then the question becomes then, um, we can figure out the one time stuff, because we have additional one time resources available. But in terms of employee pay then, um, then you're, you're okay with us having to shift or move that around a little bit to try to accommodate as many people off this list as we can. And that's the balancing act, I think. Matt?
You clarify, I think, if I heard you correctly, you felt of one time equipment was just equipment that was related to new employees.
Hmm, I don't know, not necessarily.
Equipment listed that way, with the truck loader, the work truck loader.
It's not necessarily only that. So, like, there was a workman, um, that, the parks were.
Utility park.
That's all in that five thirty.
Yeah, but that's not associated with a permanent additional person.
Okay, I just want to make sure that all of that additional equipment request was captured in that five thirty. Okay, sorry.
So, as you know, year, year in July, we will start to tie down these numbers. So, what I'm hearing from you, giving me enough direction that we can come back, and, and our hope is, and what we have been able to do, um, you know, over the, not last year, but in previous years, is that usually there's a little bit of extra money when company would say, hey, property taxes came in, or sales taxes, something came in a little higher, and then we make last minute changes in the month of August. So, I feel like there, I have a lot of direction from council based on this weekend's, uh, discussion, and, um, I do think you're going to have additional funds left over at one time. And then, like I said, to your, uh, request earlier, we'll put our heads back together, like on the CARE stuff, and, and maybe see what else we might recommend.
And I think you need to dissect that ongoing other, that three forty eight, you know, you need pull some out of there, pull some out of, um, staffing by staggering it, and pull some out of the midpoint. But we didn't really talk in great detail about the three four seven, but I think you need to look at that in priority to the other two, which is employee pay and employee positions.
Correct.
Because there might be some you can tweak out of there. Um, one thing I didn't see is anything on the court, and I don't know if there's any budget requests for the court.
That's.
That's P B B, uh, budget question.
There are no, no general fund.
We did ask, and we do have an answer.
Sorry.
We didn't have an assumption.
There is a two thousand dollar.
What's that?
There was a request for some additional funding for employee appreciation and for payment to loss for the law, so that you can come in and not actually have to see somebody and be able to pay.
But I think that would try to use core technology.
The pay did not, the pay did not meet with our compensation, um, plan for the organization as a whole, and we would be in trouble.
Right. Okay. What else, Brian? What else, council?
Can you remind me, and I apologize, I looked up while you were sitting here, what was on the parks board, the parks bond, which have, um, on, the immediate tax, it was herford.
It was herford, the completion of herford. It was erosion control.
Erosion.
It was additional work at Wetzum.
Right.
It was the trail, two million in trails.
And that was it?
There was one, there was five.
I thought there was something in box trail, I missed it.
I think it was the sports fields.
Sports fields, additional sports field work at community park with the adults on the campus.
Yep. So, I think if you could look at those items without negating the vote of the public meeting, don't look at that two million for trails.
Right.
Um, and work that into your list of priorities of one time with the one time money here and one time money for CARES, I think that would be a good thing, definitely, the erosion control.
Erosion control.
Yeah, like, for example, Seating Point Park, um, we, we may need to do something with that.
But that could be a good use of this one.
I think that's a really good point, I think.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Or that, good point, Matt. Anything else? All right, so, last comment for me, I want to thank you for bringing, giving us two days of your time. Um, I think this is a huge endeavor we go through every year. Um, and I think that, um, you know, for all the challenges we are going to have this year, I think we are going to be able to go through difficult stuff, and, um, really looking forward to it. So, the mayor, county, thank you for your time.
Good job, everybody.
You guys.
Thank you.
Sorry to blow your matters.